Why don't you ask for some money for relief for Governor's Road?
Okay, we are live. Welcome, everybody. Before we actually start the selectmen's meeting, we're going to have a very short meeting of the Governor Stoughton Trust. So we're going to call that meeting to order first on -- so this is an October 18th, 2012 meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Fund. And our order of business tonight is the approval of a 2012-2013 fuel assistance request. And I guess we have Diane here to explain it.
Yes, hi. Thank you for having me. And nice to see you in person. I usually don't bring my fuel assistance grant to you in person, but because I haven't really sat down face-to-face with all of you in a long ti -- you know, in a while, and it's been a long time, I thought I would bring my letter and say that I'm basically requesting the same amount of money that I asked for last year, $8,000. And you have my report that shows how the money was used without the names of the people that benefited, just the general circumstances. And with the $8,000, we were able to give out 27 gifts of assistance. The average fuel assistance gift was about $300. And I think you can see from the description of the situations that almost a third of the people that we helped were seniors or disabled people. So it's not surprising that they are hit the hardest during the winter with fixed incomes and so forth, so.
Diane, how do you determine how much and who gets grant money?
Well, generally, the -- everyone that comes to see me, I sit with them through an application process that includes financial verification of income. And I actually brought some guidelines that we use. I didn't know, you know, if too much information would be what you would want, but we have -- I can pass these out.
Okay.
But the first page is the low-income guidelines.
Okay.
And that's determined by the local fuel assistance agency. So we use their guidelines to determine who we consider low-income. And then the second page refers to the United Way Salvation Army, what they call the Good Neighbor Fund. So it's above low-income. It's sort of low median income.
Okay.
But we kind of would give a smaller grant to someone that has a higher income usually.
Yep.
But we take individual cases into consideration and other things that are going on. So I can just pass these along. You can look at them. And a few brochures in case you haven't seen an up-to-date brochure. So everyone has a financial assessment and a meeting with me. And after that meeting, depending on the money that we receive, we get a generous grant from the Copeland Family Foundation. We have some income from the funds that are connected to the -- the whole program is through the Unitarian Church, First Parish Unitarian. And what we do is combine the income from those funds with your grant, the Copeland grant, and then we help as many people as we can.
Right.
So we don't only give 27 gifts of assistance during the winter. It's many more gifts. But this is specifically how we spent your Governor Stoughton funds.
How much money do you bring in usually, do you raise?
How much do we raise?
Yeah.
Well, out of our office, we raise close to $100,000 between income and grants that we can give out to Milton Residents Fund clients. And we have over 200 clients. And, you know, as I mentioned in my letter, we currently have 197 families that belong to the food pantry. Those people are also certified for the food pantry through me because we have a need-based pantry. And so we have, you know, a large number of people in need in the town, which often surprises people. And, you know, we get more referrals every year, the more where they know about our program.
Right.
So you know I could come to you, or I do usually come to the selectmen for private cases on a case-by-case need, if there's an extreme case of need, which wouldn't be discussed in an open meeting like this. But this is for the general grant, and we'd really appreciate it. I know we had a mild winter last winter, but we still went through quite a bit of funds. And I think we may or may not be that lucky, but the need is still there.
Right.
You know, and you could probably see, the one other thing I'll point out from the statistics is how many people that we help get their service back on. At the point they come to me, they're really in crisis.
Have they already had their service shut off, really?
The electric -- well, in this case, the gas heats off, or they've run out of oil. And, you know, most of those families have kids in them, or seniors or disabled people. So it's real -- it's one of the things that makes the town so special, is that we have these funds. And we combine them with other funds, and we really help people.
You did a great job.
Yeah.
Somebody like to propose a motion?
I just want to comment that I've been very impressed -- this is now my third year as a selectman, and in this case here, also as a trustee of the Governor Stoughton Trust. And I'm very pleased with your work in terms of the fact that it answers Stoughton's will, which is to provide for the poor of that town, were his words. And I think that Milton has more poor people than it realizes. You talk about the seniors on a fixed income. You talk about single mothers. You talk about people that are threatened with their fuel service shut off. This is, I'm sure, although the numbers might not be necessarily so big, great relief to these needy people.
Yes.
And I commend you for the work you do, and particularly in being able to identify them, because I'm sure that's not all easy, because lots of folks sometimes have too much pride to tell you they're desperate.
Yeah, that's true. And that's why it's nice to have the clergy aware of the program and other -- the Council on Aging and people that know that it's a confidential program. People are referred. The only person they'll see face-to-face is me. No one else will know their names. It's, you know, we protect the confidentiality of the clients, so. Thanks, Bob.
Motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve a grant in the amount of $8,000 to the Milton Residents Fund for fuel assistance for needy Milton residents through the 2012-2013 season.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Governor Stoughton Fund meeting to adjourn -- to commence the selectmen's meeting.
What a selectman.
So moved.
Second. Further discussion? Okay. So we are now in the meeting of the Board of Selectmen. So I'll call a meeting to order at 6:44. And first order of business, and we do have quite a lengthy agenda tonight, so I am going to in-citizen speak, because I know we have a number of people out here that want to speak. I do want to give everybody an opportunity. But we are going to have to keep it somewhat brief so we can get through our agenda before midnight tonight, which I'd like to do, if we could. So first order of business is approval of the minutes of the October 4th, 2012 meeting.
Move approval. Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Confirmation of future meeting dates. We have November 1st and November 15th, which are our normal Thursday meeting dates. Everybody's okay with those?
That's fine.
Yep.
1st and 15th.
Yep. And we also will have a meeting scheduled for
Monday night.
Monday before town meeting. And then we also have an executive session scheduled for Wednesday. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct, Mr. Chairman. What time would you like to meet, on Monday before town meeting? 6:00 or 6:30?
What time is?
I don't think it's an awful lot.
7:30.
7:30. I don't think it's an awful lot on the agenda, is there? Well, you do have an executive session.
We have an executive session and three items to date, so you
Why don't we do 6:00, then, just to be safe? Everybody okay with 6:00?
6:00?
Yeah.
And then your meeting on Wednesday, the 24th, is at 6:30. And that is an executive session meeting.
And that will be here.
And what about Monday? Where's that?
Monday is at the high school, the normal meeting room we have at the high school, which is behind the principal's.
Okay.
Right, the main office.
Main office, yeah.
Just go to the left.
Yeah, okay. Got it. Okay. Before I start, citizen speak, I just do want to -- as most people know, this is head of the Charles Weekend, and I just want to give a shout-out, because I've got 12 of them coming to my house to stay over. Liberty College from Lynchburg, Virginia is -- my son is the head crew coach of Liberty College, and they have a couple of boats that are going to be rowing on the Charles this weekend, so I'm entertaining 12 of them this weekend, just a shout-out to them. Okay, citizen speak. Does anybody wish to address the board? Hi.
My name is Jeannie Burns, and I'm a resident of Governor's Road. My husband and I moved here two and a half years ago with our two children. And when we moved here, we didn't know that Governor's Road was a cut-through. You know, it was a mini-highway that 2,500 cars use daily. No one tells you that when you buy a house. There are no traffic lights, no double-yellow line down the middle of the street, nothing that would warn us that this was a main street of sorts. So within weeks of living on Governor's Road, I started attending Traffic Commission meetings with all of my neighbors to try to make our street safer, because the traffic problems were obvious. I've come here tonight, along with many of my neighbors, to ask for your help. The residents of my street have been fighting an uphill battle against the status quo for over two decades, or even more, to try to reduce the volume of cars on our street. As I said, there are 2,500 cars a day that use our street as a cut-through predominantly northbound commuter-time traffic. It's not just commuters and cars and trucks. It's oil trucks, it's landscape vehicles, it's construction vehicles that travel to and from Home Depot. So it's a pretty busy street with some large vehicles, even though there is a two-and-a-half-ton weight limit. I don't -- I think an oil truck is heavier than that. And the street wasn't built to handle this many cars. It's a heavily-settled street whose houses, you know, they're close to the street, they're close to each other. There's a lot of people and children that live on the street. Many of the people who use our street are aggressive drivers that will tailgate us all the way down the street when we're just driving the speed limit. They've intentionally thrown garbage in our yards when we try to tell them to slow down. They've stolen private property. The little plastic kids with flags that tell you kids live there, they've stolen those many times from many houses, just kind of as a, you know, in-your-face kind of thing. They've defaced public property. The no-left-turn sign that was up for 30 days was spray-painted. I don't know if anyone noticed that before it was taken down. It was spray-painted, and no one was paying attention to it, anyway. There have been several verbal exchanges between residents and drivers, whose anger at each other is only growing, just as the number of cars who use our street continues to grow. Just the other day, I was told a story by a friend who lives on Randolph Ave. And after leaving one of our houses, she was passed by another driver on our street. She beeped her horn, as someone might do if you were passed on a side street, and the person swerved in front of her, stopped his car, and got out of his car with a baseball bat, swearing and yelling at her. Sorry. Saying he was going the speed limit of 35. And the speed limit is 25. And this woman was pregnant at the time, and she could have easily been assaulted. It's this type of story that's becoming more common on our street. We started out trying to make this street a safer place for the almost 40 children who live there. But now we need to make it a safer place, sorry, for all of us to live. The failure of the temporary dead end was really crushing to many of us. I had a lot of hope after the last selectmen's meeting, when Mr. Lynch came up and said that, you know, if it went well, perhaps it would be considered as a, you know, a permanent solution. And I just felt the first hope I've felt in two-and-a-half years of living here. You know, as it is, it lasted three days. And I've only been fighting this two-and-a-half years, but many of the people on our street have been fighting this for 20 or 30 years. And nothing permanent has ever been put into place to help us. No speed bumps, no signs have ever worked. And I just want to know, you know, how long do we have to wait until we fix this dangerous situation? I'm looking to you, our town leaders, to help us fix this. It may require you to make a decision that is unpopular or inconvenient, but it has to be done. Ultimately, we would love a dead end on our street, as well as Plymouth Ave, but we realize that it's contingent upon the cooperation of another town, so.
Excuse me, I hate to rush along, but
Yes, I'm just about done.
30 seconds or so.
So we need a physical barrier, some kind of physical barrier, to cut down on cars. No signs, no sandbags, nothing will stop people from driving through our street. When the road was torn up, they drove through anyway, despite the police detail and signs. So I just -- I just don't want it to take an injury, or, God forbid, a death, for us to agree upon a solution. Because if a tragedy does occur, I think it will really be on the heads of the people who had a chance to make a difference and chose not to. Thank you.
Thank you. I can just remind people, let's try and keep it five minutes or less if we can.
If you're broadcasting last week, you're getting people texting from home, so I don't really want to tell them.
Oh, really? I was better -- I was in better form last week, anyway, so.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is John Duff. I live at 90 Governor's Road, 30-year resident in Milton, last 25 on Governor's Road. We moved here, my wife and my two daughters, moved here in 88, when there was less than 1,000 cars of vehicles a day traveling on this road.
Are you still broadcasting last week?
It was not built to handle 1,000 cars, and it's certainly not built to handle 3,000 cars a day, and it's growing. The town recognized that there was a problem back in 1979, when they installed large boulders on Edgill Road. That forced cars to turn from Governor's Road. Due to the certain political connections, the boulders were removed. About 15 years ago, an independent traffic consultant was hired by the merchants of East Milton Square to come up with a solution that would alleviate the traffic problem on Governor's Road. Their recommendation was to block Warner Road, which is the private way right off of Governor's, and extend the island on Edgill Road at Governor's Road. And then also extend the Edgill Island down at Grafton, so any cars coming down, Governor's, Plymouth, Grafton, would all have to go through the square. So no one -- the traffic would not go from one street to the next street to the next street. A few years later, all three selectmen voted unanimously to block Governor's Road off at the Quincy Line. The city of Quincy denied the request by the Milton Selecting. More recently, in the past couple of years, stop signs at Governor's Road and Warner did not put a dent in the volume and speed of vehicles, just angered drivers, leading to horns blaring all the time, all day and all night. No-left-turn signs at Warner and Governor's, and Edgill and Governor's were installed. After three days of police presence, for 20 minutes in the morning and 20 minutes in the early evening, vehicles ignored the sign. With no law enforcement, signs don't work. Over the past 25 years, there have been several accidents on Governor's Road. Cars hitting parked cars, even one car going over the sidewalk and hitting a tree on someone's front yard. How about two weeks ago, the night after we had a selectmen's meeting? Early on a Friday evening, there were two outside gatherings of neighbors on Governor's Road, which included children. A car came down from the Quincy, crossed the Milton Mine, and slammed into a parked car on the opposite side of the street. There was no -- there was serious damage to both vehicles. But what if? There have been numerous incidents of harassment by drivers. I quickly tell you some personal stories, but we're in a hurry, and most of them -- most people have heard them. Chief Wells knows all about them. They may be funny, but they're not funny to me. They were very insulting, and it was harassment. Violent drivers, all the time. I waved at somebody to slow down with my five fingers, and I get one finger in return. We, as Governor's Road residents, have handled this situation with integrity in wanting our turn to speak. But it seems the more noise you make, the better chance of getting things done. It is amazing to me that people who do not live on the street have more say than the people who do. Why does that -- why does it work that way? I'm afraid now, with the issue of making the papers, the situation on Governor's Road is not only -- is going to get worse. More people now know about the East Milton Bypass Road. I could go on, and I just want to end it. The people who called and complained are the people who care about themselves. The people on Governor's Road who want the road closed are the people who truly care for one another. Those are the people I want to associate myself with, and I'm proud to call them neighbors and friends. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Carol Potter. I live at 24 Sheldon Street. I've lived there for 28 years with my husband. We originally bought this property because of its ease of access to everywhere, to the South Shore, Southeast Expressway, city of Austin, East Milton Square. We've lived there 28 years and have always loved living there, raised our two daughters there, have never had a problem with the town in all these years, until the recent closing of Plymouth Avenue. I did not know this was going to close. I knew of the problems on Governor's Road. I went to Home Depot one day, one-minute ride there, right around the corner, came and hit the barriers at Plymouth Avenue, had to turn around like everybody else, ended up on Willard Street, sitting on Willard Street, watching the red light three times, while I looked at my home across the expressway, right there. And it took me 20 minutes, what should have been a two-minute ride. I really sympathize with the people of Plymouth Avenue. I would not want 2,500 cars coming down my road every day. But I -- 2,500, I don't even know where that number came from, but I do know that there's no law or ordinance that limits the number of cars that can go down any given street on any given day. Cars are supposed to drive on streets. That's what streets are for. Streets are not a playground. They're not for children's basketball hoops. Basketball hoops belong in people's driveways. Children should play in their backyards or on sidewalks, not on the street. That's not what it's for. I don't know what other alternative there could be. I thought of maybe, you know, putting speed bumps on Plymouth Ave, like they do on Governor's Road, or even up at Low Circle, they have speed bumps. Maybe that might deter some of the people from driving on the road. I don't know. I do know that if something like this is made permanent, instead of an experiment, my husband and I will consider selling our house and moving to a different town. I would like to present to the selectmen a petition. I have signatures from everybody in the neighborhood. I don't know who to present it to, but thank you for listening.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the board on Governor Stoughton, or -- come on up. Governor's Road, I'm sorry. Governor Stoughton on the brain.
Governor Stoughton.
Hi, good evening. My name is Joe Inarato. I live at 230 Gardner Road. And I work a Mass DOT, although I'm not here tonight as a representative of the department. I'm here as a resident of the town. But I do have some recommendations for you that could help the folks on Governor's Road and Plymouth, and wouldn't be particularly disruptive. I don't know exactly whose jurisdiction the lights are at East Milton Square, but if you could get the Willard Street, Granite Avenue traffic, and give that as much of a priority as you could in the AM peak travel period, give them as much green light as possible. If you can get the people going northbound in the morning, maybe one or two light cycle stops, and not three or four, they'll be less likely to be looking for alternative routes through Upton and Governor's and Plymouth and things. So that's something you could do that wouldn't disrupt anybody and wouldn't cause any problems, and you wouldn't have to make any big announcements about it, and you could tweak it over time. You don't want to make it too long and screw up the cross-traffic east and west. And the -- for the peak period in the afternoon, if you could signalize the intersection there where the Woodtree Bridge and then Granite Ave merged with Adam Street, and give the people going southbound a protected movement, instead of having the traffic back way up, they'd be less likely to seek alternate routes on Governor's Road going southbound in the peak period. Those types of things. And that could either be done as part of the East Milton DEC project included with that, or, which would be even better, it could be done beforehand, and then it could be used as part of the traffic mitigation for the DEC project to help move traffic through while construction is going on. You could -- the -- all the traffic figures are there from the study. I went to all the public meetings for that, for the East Milton Square study, but that was just there. So it would -- you could actually take those findings, those traffic counts and things, and use that as the basis to move forward, to initiate a project with Mass DOT. I work at District 4. You folks are part of District 6 now. But that would be something that Bill Clark and your folks, DPW folks, could do. And that wouldn't be disruptive at all. Now, we wouldn't like to see the median strip closed off on Edgill Road, but if that's the only way to give our neighbors on Governor's Road some relief, we could live with that, because nobody gets cut off. But sure, I think there could be some other things you could do to get the traffic moving better through the square, and make it so that people would be less likely to look for alternate routes. Thank you.
I don't want to say too much, because we have so many people here, but we clearly are looking for trying to do anything we can on that Granite Ave northbound traffic. I think one of the big problems we have is, the better the traffic is there, because the expressway is so bad in the morning, if you get the traffic flowing better through there, you just -- it's catch-22. You get more traffic coming off the expressway to try and shortcut it, and then it just
Yeah, I mean, it's the old saying, you know, if you build it, or if you do it, they'll come.
Right.
What I always say back to folks, because I go to a lot of public meetings when people say things like that, is, "Well, what if you don't build it, and they come anyway?" Right? So the better you can make that through traffic, and the merchants like traffic. They like people driving by their businesses, so
As long as they stop.
Right. So, I mean, it's -- the better you can get traffic moving through the square, the less likely people will be to be looking for alternate routes. Now, will, you know, will that mean that more people might jump off of the expressway? Yeah, but I mean, it's still, you know, I go north on the expressway quite a few times, and I'll never take an alternate route, because I know it's better to just sit and wait it out than to try to jump off and go somewhere else.
Right.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Couple ideas.
Anybody else?
Would anybody else like to address the board, first on the Governor's Road, and then I'll take other things?
Hi, my name is Mike Gelli. I live on Plymouth Avenue. And in the interest of time, I don't have specifics more than the generalities of -- I live on the southern end of the street, right by the Quincy Line. And we hadn't really seen this. We appreciate that the Governor's Road folks, the town, the DPW, has addressed this as a community solution, which is looking at all roads the same, making sure that the traffic doesn't shift. I think, I felt this way. I didn't really realize, I looked at it as a problem instead of one that had a solution, because for the 72 hours that there was a blockade, it was a lot better. And people who hadn't paid attention before started to pay attention at my end of the street. We did an informal survey of numbers of people who were for and against, and the same things came up, right? It's inconvenient, but only coming one way, basically for most people coming home, right? Leaving, you can head down State Street, and that's easy enough. But the safety factor kind of outweighed that. And it's a personal choice. I think the main things I wanted to bring tonight are, is one, very hopeful that we didn't miss our chance with, it seems to be, communication issues, that a bunch of people who used the cut-through either didn't look up and see the sign, or the people in Quincy, or even some in Milton, just didn't know that this was happening, and they were caught off-guard. So expressing some hope that we'll have So, expressing some hope that we'll have a shot to do this again. And the other is that we continue to work at that, at a community solution.
Hi. My name is Mary Madden. I live on Cypress Road. I'm not very good at the speaking thing, so.
Take it easy, bro.
And I certainly understand all the problems. But we've lived here for 30 years. We've never sent any kids through the school system. We pay our taxes like we should with no problem. But we don't feel like, when we use Governor's Road up limit, that it's a cut-through. We kind of just feel like, we go down to 7-Eleven in the morning. We should be able to, instead of trying to get onto Adams, which is almost impossible, we should be able to use those two streets. I just don't understand why the people in Milton shouldn't be able to use the streets. You know? Even coming from Boston, when the restrictions on Otis and Pleasant and Reservation, I mean, that's a real problem when you get off the expressway from Boston and you're trying to get to Cypress Road. I mean, our time is doubling. We're spending more gas. And as much as I understand the problems, I mean, if everybody obeys the rules and goes the speed limit, I think we should be able to use those roads.
How you doing? I'm Bill White. I live on 73 Plymouth Avenue, and I just wanted to briefly come and just say thank you to the Selectmen for their leadership on this issue. I spent that weekend where we had the road closure. It was like a transformation of our neighborhood. People were out in the streets. Kids were playing in the street. I think it's actually okay for kids to play in the street, and I think it's great for them to shoot basketballs in the street. I'll just tell you that we transformed our neighborhood over a weekend where we had this closure. I know the same is true up on Governor's Road. So, I was disappointed to hear about the mayor of Quincy. He's a good guy. My wife has coached his son in basketball at St. Agathus. And I guess, my disappointment in the mayor is that, you know, after just a couple of hours on a Monday morning, he unilaterally made this decision. And I think, I think what we, what I would urge you guys to do, and I know this is not an easy issue, is I think, I think we know in our heart what the right decision here is for the safety of our children, for the safety of the neighborhood. These roads were not built to be main thoroughfares, main transportation corridors. The 2,500 number comes from a traffic study. This has been studied. I think there's a, there's a general consensus for the folks who actually live on those streets and in those neighborhoods, that the traffic impacts are staggering. And so, I guess I would briefly ask the Selectmen to try to go back to the mayor. We made a joint agreement to give this a six-month trial. I think we should try to.
Six weeks.
Excuse me. I love six months. But a six-week, a six-week opportunity. I think that is a, that is a good test. I think we should go back and ask the mayor to stick to that agreement that his city made, and that we should make decisions together and not unilaterally after three hours with commuters, commuters who are complaining, nobody on that, on those roads complaining. We need to find a solution to this, and I, I guess I just want to thank the board for their work so far, and urge you to continue on, not give up. Let's engage the city. Let's try to get them back to the table. Let's get the six weeks, and then let's think about the future. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Bill. Any else on?
Yes, I'd like to say something. I'm a spy here from Quincy, so.
Should we let you talk?
Kind of from Quincy. I'm the lucky guy that just happens to be, my house is in Quincy, and my garage is in Milton. And so, that Berlin Wall was put up in front of my house. My questions are emergency vehicles. If you put something permanent up there, how emergency vehicle's going to get through? As you can tell, I don't take care of myself. I could have a massive coronary any day. Am I depending on Milton, or am I depending on Quincy? Milton Hospital's much closer than Quincy Hospital. Are they going to have to go around? Those are some of my serious concerns. And I'm all for cutting down on the traffic, believe me. I was, I was so upset when Quincy finally filled that pothole in front of my house. It was there for four months. It got deeper and deeper every day, and I would just listen to all the, all the traffic cutting through, hitting that pothole. Which brings to mind that probably a speed bump won't help. But I'm just wondering, this was all a surprise to me. I learned about it the day before when the signs went up, and then I saw it the next day. I was wondering what other alternatives were looked at outside of putting that up. If there's, I know you told Joe back there that you guys are looking for other alternatives. I think it would be great if, you know, everybody, like somebody said, everybody's concerned about themselves. This gentleman here, how it affects them, you know? So now, I am affected. How it affects me is, all these people that are cutting through Milton, now I have to become one of those. They're trying to avoid going through Milton Center in the morning. Now I have to go out and go through Milton Center, because I work in Rosendale. You know? And so, that is my concern, along with the, with the emergency vehicles, and God forbid we ever have another snow like we did two years ago. What happens on the dead ends with those snows? They're going to have to have, you know, front-end vehicles in there to remove the snow and all that stuff. I don't know if all that's been looked at and assessed.
Well, again, and I don't want to take too much time up, because the closure was a temporary one, we did ask the question of our Public Works Director in terms of the emergency vehicles, and he did vet that out with both police and fire, and they felt they could probably get through. There wasn't inequity, obviously, for the people on that, I guess it's Edgehill Road in Quincy, is it? That there were a couple of houses in Milton, and that was clearly an inequity that, you know, we could not have made permanent. Obviously, you can't cut two Milton residents off from the town of Milton. That clearly is not fair.
One of the other things, and I don't know who did it, but I have a large flower pot out in front of my house, right up by the front door, and twice, somebody came and put it on the sidewalk, because people were cutting through on the sidewalk. And so, if you do put that barrier up, you're going to need to go a lot further, because on both sides, people, I actually saw a van go through, coming from the Quincy side, go up on the sidewalk, and through, so. That's my story, and I'm sticking with it.
Thank you. Anybody else on Governor's Road?
Hi. My name is Amy Robbins, and I live at 52 Governor's Road. I have two children, ages seven and four. And I just wanted to point out, I think the points have been made. You know, it's too many cars, they're going too fast down our street, and now that the road is freshly paved, the problem is even worse. And we are honestly seeing some of the most atrocious behavior that I have ever witnessed in my life, very on our street where we live and where we're raising our children. This is obviously an issue that is very, very important to me, and I just wanted to be sure that you guys really knew, the number of neighbors that are here, the people who live on Governor's Road, who are all raising small children on that street, who are all, several of them are out in the hallway here, there's a whole bunch in the room. I don't know if everybody just wants to raise your hand so that you guys really know. This is an issue that is critical for our future, living in Milton and living on the street, and for our children. So, I just really implore you, I don't know if the dead end is the right answer, but we have to do something. It's just not right the way that it is, and somebody's going to get hurt. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Is that it on Governor's Road? Would anybody else like to address the board on any other issue?
Hi. My name is Bob Hiss. I live at 273 Adams Street here in Milton. The reason I'm here tonight is to talk about question four that's on the ballot this coming November called the Community Preservation Act. And you might wonder, why would someone come to Citizen Speak to talk about a ballot question at the Selectmen's meeting? Because that was not my original intent. But my concern is that the speakers that have come before town meeting and the Selectmen's meeting sponsored by the Selectmen have been exclusively advocates here to come educate, rather than presenting perhaps a balanced view. So I've requested some time to come have a, present a balanced view, and it was told the Citizen Speak is my vehicle. So, I'm here to educate on some, on a different point of view on the Community Preservation Act. There are numerous reasons why I think this is a poor idea for us, and why I'm voting, recommending people vote against it. But the first is, as I presented at town meeting, where I'm a town meeting member from Precinct Three, if you look at our budget back in 2007, we spent about 80 million bucks. If you look at our budget in 2013, we're going to spend around $91 million, $11 million more a year, on a variety of different things. So my point is, each of those years, the amount that the town raises is more than the Community Preservation Act would raise. So there's an argument that says we don't have the money. I believe that we do have the money, but as a town, we're choosing to spend it on different things. So many of the things the CPA proponents advocate are worthy, and I would actually go support them as part of the, as a town meeting member in the budget. However, I think they should be reallocated, we should reallocate our funds in order to go spend those. The second is, as the saying goes, the only sure thing in life is death and taxes, but there's a corollary, which is new taxes never die. And I think the reasons for that is, when taxes are raised, the system and a bureaucracy grows up around it. And many of the proponents of the CPA are part of that bureaucracy, people who work and thrive on it. If any threat comes to that tax and that revenue, the bureaucracy and the system rises up to defend itself and argues against it vociferously. The second reason is, once the money starts to flow, the recipients become dependent on it. They put it in their budgets, they start to plan on it, it becomes part of their expectation as whatever their going concern is. And if there's any threat to that tax and that revenue, they rise up fiercely defending it. So for those reasons, I believe that the concept that this is just a five-year ballot, its duration is limited, and the citizens can eliminate it, might be legally true. I think it's completely impractical and implausible. So this, the temporary nature of this, I think is just an illusion. And lastly, one of the major arguments is that it doesn't cost the average household, average citizen, that much. They list numbers like 70 or 80 dollars in the first year. But if you project forward, and we continue to see the type of prop two and a half increases we get every year, and override every, every three years to the tune of about 5%, we had one in '07, we had one in 2010, you compound that, and you listen to all the people that lived here tonight, "I've lived here for 10 years, I've lived here for 20 years, I've lived here for 30 years." If you compound that, what you find is, the vote people are going to cast in November is not an 80-dollar vote once. It's hundreds of dollars, or thousands of dollars, over 10 years, over 20 years. So just some examples. If your tax bill's 5,000 bucks today, over 10 years, you're going to spend another 650 on the CPA. Over 20 years, you're going to spend 1,500 just on the CPA. If you're one of the high-end houses, you're at a Brush Hill Road or something, then that 10-year number is going to be $3,200 compounded. 20 years is going to be over $8,000 compounded. So this is a big number, if you plan on living here for a long time. The material difference is not just a small 80-dollar number. So there's lots of other reasons, but I just wanted to provide a few points of education for the Selectmen tonight, and thanks for your time.
Thanks, Bob. I don't know if anybody else wants to speak on community preservation or not. If not, then does anybody else want to address the board on any other issue? Okay. Is there none? Well.
Mr. Chair, I'm wondering if, because we had a lot of citizens speak with the topic being Governor's Road, Plymouth Ave., et cetera, if it might be good, while these folks are still here, to move up to item 11?
Can we do the public hearing first, at least?
Oh, okay.
Just get that.
It's published time, yes.
So I have no problem after that, if we want to, yeah, if we, I'm not going to entertain anymore, because, again, we have 18 items on the agenda tonight, so I can't allow people to speak to the issue. That's why, but they're certainly welcome to sit here and listen as we discuss.
Sure.
That's fine. So first, I'll go to item five on the agenda, which is the public hearing, NSTAR, on a conduit grant of location on Canton Avenue. Do we have a representative here from NSTAR?
No.
Okay. If we don't have a representative, do we have anybody we can ask questions of? I know we have Joe Lynch out, and do you know anything about this, Joe?
We know nothing about it. Do you have a senior?
I would say if we have.
Thompson handled it.
I would.
What is this, just to him?
It's a recommendation from John Thompson in your packet.
Okay.
John issued a written recommendation?
They recommend the engineering department recommends.
Is this going to a new house emery, or?
Rebuilt house. 1661 Canton Avenue. The map shows that the one. See the map above the letter from the engineering department recommending it?
Is the concern that there's not an NSTAR representative present for the hearing?
Yes.
Pretty much.
In the past, I've experienced, at least on one occasion, where the representative wasn't present, and the matter was tabled.
Yes.
I think the matter should be tabled, and that the petitioner should have a representative
How does the rest of the board feel?
I'm just wondering what it is we're approving. Is it from the street into a building site, or?
Yeah, from the, it looks like it's from the street, from a utility pole, it's going to go through conduit and into private property at 1661 Canton Avenue, is it? It's a rebuilt home at 1661 Canton Ave., which I believe is that, it was that old house that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, let me interrupt you. My name is Pat Considine. I was aware of the actual hearing, but the address was not put on, so we couldn't really tell where it was. The property.
Is that your property?
It is, yes.
Okay.
I'm not a property owner, I'm the developer.
Okay.
And I'm here on behalf of the property owner, Brian Thomas Griffin, who was here with me.
Okay.
This is a single-family home that we're looking to build on Canton Ave., adjacent to 1661, which is a current building that's there. There's a lot adjacent to that that we've purchased.
Okay. I know what you mean, yes. Okay. 1661 is the old home that was for sale?
That is, that is correct.
Okay. Yep. Okay. So, so it's a vacant lot at this point?
It's a vacant lot at this, this point. We've petitioned all of the parties that one would have to, to go build a single-family home.
Okay.
Obviously, we have filed with NSTAR to have a service brought to the home, and.
Now, it's coming from a utility pole on which side of the street?
It's on, it's on the side of the street that the lot is on, which, if you're going towards 138 on Canton Ave.,
Yep.
It is on the right-hand side.
Right-hand side, okay. So, yeah, as you're going southbound on Canton Ave.
Correct.
On the right-hand side.
And in fact, I believe the utility pole that they intend to use is actually one right now where an overhead line is going onto the property. We just wanted to take that and put it underground for aesthetic reasons and other.
Are there sidewalks in that part of Canton Ave., or not?
There are no sidewalks on that.
Okay. So it's not going to be disturbing a road or sidewalk?
It's not going to be disturbing the road or a sidewalk. We actually also have petitioned and received approval from the planning board under the scenic road bylaw to have an opening in a stone wall that's existing there, and that has been approved.
Okay.
We would, we would be bringing the service through that opening. In other words, we wouldn't be looking to create another opening in the, in the stone wall.
Okay.
On the scenic way. So the level of disruption above and beyond what has already been approved would not be of any significance, other than a trench going in underneath that sidewalk, excuse me, underneath that driveway.
Sure.
So it's going from the utility pole right underground?
That is correct, yes.
I mean, I think based upon what I've heard, Bob, you know, we're not going to be disturbing a sidewalk.
Here's my concern.
Is there a sidewalk?
No.
Anytime there's been a proposal for National Grid to install a gas line, they've petitioned, and they've had a representative here.
Yes.
My experience being on the board, anytime they, and I have no problem with what you're talking about, but I do have a problem with the procedure and what the law is, and NSTAR is the petitioner. And it's a public hearing, people have the right to come tonight, and I don't have any problem with what's being proposed. I've got problems, big time, with the procedure. The petitioner doesn't have a representative present at a public hearing. I got a problem with that.
Sure.
Let me ask you a question. If we were to postpone this to our next meeting, would it be, would it significantly delay the construction of a site, or?
the construction of the site, or?
I suppose, Mr. Chairman, the prob, the answer to that is probably not. The permit, we're expecting will be issued in the next couple of days, or at least a foundation permit, and, and our goal is to at least bring temporary power onto the site. That can be done without the, the service, the underground service. In fact, it probably would be done without the underground service, so--
Right, okay.
I don't really see an issue with that.
So you actually button up the foundation here?
Clear, we're not, we're really not, not at, at any issue there, and we're on the correct side of the street, so we're not worried about a street opening permit. I know you have a deadline, I think of November fifteenth.
If you have no objection, I think we'd rather have an NSTAR representative--
Yeah, and I've got a suggestion. We could, we're going to have a meeting on the twenty-second at the high school.
Yeah, not a good place for a public hearing, I don't think. I mean, you tell me--
It's not enough, it's not enough time, I believe the agenda's been posted, Thursday? We could, we could put it on, we could put it on Wednesday's agenda.
Executive session?
Just have one open session item.
Yeah, I think that'd be more preferable.
But if an NSTAR representative comes back, he's just going to present us with the exact same thing that's here.
I understand that.
So in the interest of keeping the project moving forward, I don't see the big deal in getting it approved right now.
Because it's, it's not how we do things procedurally.
Oh, I understand, but if you're in the business, you understand what they're going through. I'm in this business, so--
Well, I understand where he's at, but he's not the petitioner, that's my point.
But he's the developer, and the owner's right here. So, I mean, we can delay it if we want, but I say, in the interest of fairness, just move it forward.
The engineering department did recommend the grant of location.
Yeah, I've got no problem with anything about this, except the procedure, the law that the petitioner is NSTAR, and it's a public hearing, and, and the petitioner doesn't have representation, and I just, I got a problem with that, because I don't think that's procedurally the way the town does business.
Do you have access to temporary power? Where are you going to get it from?
We, we would be getting it from the street, yes. It's effectively the same pole that we would be getting--
So you'd be bringing an overhead wire?
Yes, that's correct.
So you want to bring it in underground?
We want to bring it underground. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out, we have absolutely no control over NSTAR. We didn't petition this. We, we applied to NSTAR for our permits to, to install the service, and we expect them to hear, we, we expect it to be in the audience, just like everybody else.
Right, I understand. I totally understand.
We weren't actually even sure that it was our address, because it never actually pointed that, it just spoke to a location. We thought it might be us.
Right, right. It's up to you, I mean, if you want to make a motion--
Well, I would say, that's the difference. If you have access to temporary power, then you're not going to be held up.
And, and I think that's, that's a fair statement, we're not looking--
And then to Mr. Sweeney's point, we can, we can wait till NSTAR's here, just in case there are any questions.
All right, so why don't we see if we can get around for Wednesday, then? So at least we won't be pushing up two weeks.
I thought you were going to be delayed by--
No, I, I would not want to say that, because that's not, that's not a fair statement on our part, other than to say that we don't know why they're not here, and if they will be here next Wednesday, or whatever.
Terminal's able to show up. We've had a couple of times when, for whatever reason, we don't even know why, that they don't, but, but they generally are pretty good about showing up. So I thoroughly suspect if we ask them to be here on Wednesday, they will be here on Wednesday.
Yes.
And I can tell you that I don't see a problem with this, so I, you know, it should go right through.
Yeah, and I certainly understand your procedures, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll continue the public hearing till October twenty-fourth.
Yes. But is, is that in the form of a motion, or, okay, so, so make a motion?
Second motion.
Okay. Okay, motion made in second, any further discussion? Seen not all's in favor?
None.
Unanimous. Okay, let's, had a request to go to item eleven, so, Joe and Richard are here, and they both are. Want to come up and talk about Governor's Road and Plymouth Ave. closures?
You can sit in the middle. You can sit in the middle.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I guess to get this started, why don't you go through the, and I think most of the board knows a little bit of what happened, but I'm not sure that everybody in the audience does, so, in terms of what happened over the weekend, you know, leading up to all this.
I think, give me about a minute, just, just to run through a quick chronology.
Sure.
On October first, there was a meeting held jointly between Milton folks and Quincy folks regarding the impacts of their construction project and the detours resulting from that. And at that meeting, there was a meeting of the minds between the two communities that closure of Governors could not, we would not allow the impact to shift over to Plymouth, and came up with a solution to barricade both.
So it was Quincy's idea originally? Quincy came to you with the idea of closing?
Quincy came with us with the problem, that during construction, that they needed to close their road down.
Okay.
And it was Milton's position that we weren't going to do that haphazardly, having lived through our own construction projects, seeing the impacts on Plymouth and Grafton. So it was our requirement that they not have that shift occur. And, and the closure is the solution we both came up with. We, you know, both communities, there was multiple people, it was the Commissioner of Public Works, their, their engineering staff, member, one member of the Board of Selectmen, one member of the Police Department, and two members, myself and one member of my staff. So it was, you know, a pretty, pretty good meeting of the mind. On our side, it was comprised of three members of the Traffic Commission, where we didn't have a quorum, but at least people who've been involved in the, the issue. So we, in good faith, with the agreement in principle, they went back and spoke to their powers that be, the Ward Counselor, who had already anointed the whole concept, and confirmed with the mayor that they were going to support it. And with that in place, we scheduled a meeting with the Board of Selectmen on the fourth of October, which we were here two weeks ago, and much to the, I think enthusiasm of the Milton residents on the streets, for the most part, at any rate. And we knew it wouldn't be a panacea, but it would at least give us an opportunity to look at the, the impact over the six-week period of construction. On the ninth of October, we put the message board up, you know, warning people on Edgell Road, that the roads would be closed, that seek alternate routes. Quincy was supposed to do the same, didn't at that time, didn't at the same time that we did. We got notices in the newspaper, we obviously publicly broadcast that Selectmen's meeting where the, where the word had gotten out. So I think we ended up holding up our end of the bargain on the communication pretty Quincy's message board went up on the twelfth, three days later than ours, which was literally Friday morning at nine o'clock of last week. At two o'clock on Friday, we closed Plymouth Avenue, and approximately shortly thereafter, two-fifteen-ish, Quincy closed Governors for the, for the weekend. Lot of discomfort on Friday afternoon from commuters, we, a lot of us fielded phone calls and emails. Vast majority of the people that I spoke with, from my perspective alone, were mostly Quincy residents, expressing dismay with the impacts to their, their commute, their travel. Most of the folks that I got from the Milton side were on Sheldon Ave., and, and they were also dismayed that they, because they, on the periphery, and admittedly, didn't get to reach out, that the Plymouth and Grafton people that, who had been involved in the traffic issue. Sheldon, being a dead-end street, doesn't see the traffic issue, but nonetheless, they felt the pinch. Throughout the weekend, various, I'm not going to say maliciousness, but the barricades were up, they were down, they were moved, they were untied.
You can use maliciousness.
It was malicious.
I'll use it if you don't.
And come to find out, it was with the, with the support perhaps of another agency in another city, of helping the neighbors take the barricades down. So we found that out, and it's true, we found that out through the, through the newspaper and the Patriot Ledger, that that was in fact Quincy officials helping with those barricades coming down on Saturday, and on Friday night. Nonetheless, they got back in, we secured them on Saturday, started the morning commute on Monday, as, as you, as you would. Their sign was still up, their warning signs, so the people who ventured into the neighborhood did ignore their sign that says they're closed. But nonetheless, they, they created gridlock, they, they didn't have a police detail on the Quincy side, the people did get into the neighborhood, and it was, it was a mess, and the vast majority of the people coming in were the people not from the neighborhood itself, for the most part.
Commuters.
Commuters coming through, which is what we know to be the issue. Simply put, I got a call at nine o'clock on Monday morning, and from the Commissioner of Public Works in Quincy, and he had gotten a direct order from Mayor Colquitt, who simply said, "Enough's enough, they're gone." I've already, they've ordered their people taken down, they were in the process of taking down when the call was placed, and an hour later, ours were down. That's the, that's the chronology of what happened. I think we heard pretty clearly tonight, I think, that the divisive issues between various elements, even on our own community, on our side, you know, we, everybody understands impact on one street, adjust, shifts to another, shifts to another, like a domino effect. We, we know that, we try to be sympathetic to that. What we do know, and we've known for some time, is we can't unilaterally do anything on our end. We can't control the problem at the bottom of the hill, meaning Edgell, at the end of the flow. You need to ebb it at the beginning of the flow. And with Quincy's support and in cooperation and signing on to this, we can't accomplish it.
And from all indications, they just have no, no desire at this point to--
Well, they, if--
They've been great, though. In the month, I've listened, I'm ready to move to Governor's Road. I don't know, I live in Reed still, and I'm not sure which one's worse, but, but in the past few months, at least from the operational point of view, police, public works, engineers, they've been very good. Even the residents, the meeting that Mr. Sweeney and some of the residents went to, that was at the Common Market, and my own feeling was, I thought this was the closest, because is, maybe people at home don't know, everyone from Governor's Road knows, whether they lived there three weeks or thirty-seven years. Neither one of us can do anything unilaterally, because the town, the street runs through both.
Both, yeah.
So I thought it was, we were really building towards, I wasn't sure this would be exactly, but I thought it was a step in the right direction, that I thought the fact that they had come to the table and been hearing pretty much the same, I, I think their elected officials are hearing the same from their residents of Governor's Road as we are. And I wasn't surprised as Mr. Lynch was, when it was just revoked, just like that.
They have been quoted in the Patriot Ledger as saying that the city remains open to experimenting with permanently closing Governors in the future, while closure complaints from drivers, because customers cutting through the neighborhood, so on and so forth, so at least publicly, they're saying they're not going to finalize it, though they clearly felt the impact of it. They, they have stated that they're going to be having their own community meeting once again, at the Quincy Alks on October twenty-fifth, that's the Quincy Alks on Quarry Street. So, you know, it's not a dead issue on their end.
Let me ask you a question, because, I mean, I've heard from, from you, Joe, and from, well, actually, you, Rich, too, I believe, that there, in general terms, is no problem with people obeying the law on the street, but I'm hearing a different perception from the people that I, that I heard, that there are in fact people driving fast, driving recklessly, tailgating, being verbally abusive.
People speaks to the specifics of law.
Let me talk to the specifics. The things you say happen everywhere, but if we look at data from Governor's Road, because it's easy to say, okay, let's put a speed bump. Volume is the bigger issue, and I bet a hundred dollars, I bet a thousand dollars, that in the three days, Mr. Duff, I bet, will say I'm correct, in the three days that that street was closed, panacea might even be a good word, that they saw a dramatic change in their life, just from local traffic that was using it as a dead end versus the cut-through traffic. The second thing that, and I think one of the second things, and there's the reason why we proactively put a signboard up there about three or four weeks ago, is because as soon as they had finished their end of the, from a policing perspective, new pavement equals a fast track to us.
Sure.
And, and I wish, and I'll be, people, I think they know me well enough, they email me, I answer them, if they call me, I'll meet with them. I can't put a police car there an hour, a day, or two hours, just, we just don't have the resources. So we put a signboard there, just to try and, a big signboard, we left it there for days, just to try and say, "Slow down," you know. We can't say children, legally, we can't say children playing in the street, but we said heavy foot traffic, I think was the message we created. But volume is clearly the big thing. There are four streets in this town that carry the bulk of the cut-through volume, and it didn't take me long in this job, which I knew nothing about, as traffic, Chairman of the Traffic Commission. Highland Street, Thatcher Street, Eli Street, Governor's Road. You take those four, and there you go. There's the four side streets in this town--
But also, you've got Granite Place--
And each one of them, each one of them is carrying a significant bulk of the road.
But we also have Granite Place, we also have--
That's a circle.
Yeah, and that little, yeah, that little, but as far as a straightaway, no turns, no rights, no lefts, if you look at the numbers that John Thompson has done, and when he comes to the traffic, and he reports daily volume of cars, there's your numbers right there.
We, I think I mentioned two weeks ago, when I was here, that, and we have several counts we've done on, on Governors, and when our roadway, our project on Governors was under construction, we put the traffic counting tubes out on Plymouth to measure, were we in fact, was it just a theoretical perception that they might move over there, or was it actual? And we put the tubes over.
I'm sure you're correct.
We measured it. They, they went from one road to another, and that's where they go.
Yep.
They're going to do it, the people are going to go, I, as much as we, and I know that you know this, as much as we try to make recommendations to you from the Traffic Commission, to take traffic out of neighborhoods and push it onto main roads, our difficulty in this case, and we've tried stop signs, we've tried the no-left turns, we tried making it a dead end. Whatever, for every action, there's going to be a reaction. I was at the College Court School to the Cunningham School today, third grade, and asked what's the worst part about being, a woman just asked me, hardest part of being a police chief? I said, very simple, one word, in the town of Milton, traffic. Because it just, it is, is an urban pressure that we feel both ways, every day, and it's on an infrastructure that was designed, those streets haven't changed since we were kids, and that's, that's, that's the dumb. The other thing that I want to say, and I know, I don't want to speak for Joe, but I, I want to speak for all the Traffic Commission, I heard Mr. White speak to, we're not going to walk away from this. We do have dialogue with the city of Quincy. We're not going to just say, just because they took this down, that we're not going to go back to this, and, because the problem hasn't gone away. And I've said this once, and I'll say it publicly again, I'm not going to rest until we figure this out, so, it's definitely, it's not easy, it's definitely, and the square definitely is part of it. If it were as easy as changing signalization, we'd do it.
I know it's not.
We'd have done that a long time ago. It's--
It is amazing when you, when you look at, because, because I do travel from Quincy down, you know, Granite Ave., going, going northbound quite a bit, and if the, if the expressway is flowing at five o'clock, there is no traffic on Granite Ave., you buzz through there. If the expressway's tied up, it's gridlocked through there, and more than, more often than not, the expressway's tied up and it's gridlocked, but every so often, it's not.
Commuters being creatures of habit, they, they've already committed to not being on Willard and not being on Granite Ave., much further back, they've already ventured up into, into the Governors and Plymouth neighborhood, before they've even been able to determine whether there's traffic there or not. They've just, in their own mind, have determined, "That's my shortcut, that's the way I'm going." So that, there's going to be a change of mindset, much further back along the traffic highway.
I, again, going through that area, you know, when you go by, whether you're coming down Quarry Street, or whether you're coming down Willard Street, once you get by Common Market, I mean, that's where you've got to commit to take a left or go straight, and you can see all the way down the road, you know if it's going, if the traffic is flowing or not, and you're not going to take that left if the traffic's flowing. You're going to go straight, because it's quicker.
And there's a reason why the town, one-way Pierce Street, first street that we lived on, we moved here, was Pierce Street, it was a two-way street.
Yep.
They one-way that to stop that cut-through from the back up on Granite Ave.
Right.
And that's, as you say, moving forward, everything that we can do for you, because I, we still agree, there's, there's an association between the square traffic, commute traffic, what happens, this isn't an al, Smart, which uses the term alternative route, this isn't an alternative route for them. This is a, this is a, their normal flow, people want to use it when they want to use it. And so we're going to meet in November, and we're going to look at both issues again, but I'm not--
I mean--
We'll go to the meeting, we'll go to the October meeting, we'll definitely go to go to the, even though it's theirs, we'll just listen to what they have to say in Quincy.
I, I understand the frustration of, of the neighbors, and, and I really do, you know, 'cause nobody wants to, nobody wants to see that kind of traffic. But, but I, I suspect we get the same complaints again from the people on Franklin Church and Granite Place. We can't close them all off.
Anything around the square, that's right, and that's, we can't close them off, but one of the things is, say, if you notice in the patterns where we, one of the things we did Reservation Row and Otis, trying to, hopefully alleviate some of that-
The one way.
-cut-through over to them on the PM.
Yeah.
To force them onto Brook, to force you on Adams, but it's true, people don't wanna sit, and they'll start trying, it's like, I say swiss cheese, they'll try and find a hole to get through, and, but we understand, and, and I really want, not to speak on behalf of the board, but I want people to realize that, how seriously you take this as well. You've, you've allowed us up here, I don't know how many times now to discuss this, I don't know how many meetings you've gone to, I mean, we've, we're not gonna walk away from this, it just, we're not happy, I, I'm kinda shocked, because it took so much work to get last Friday, to just pull it so fast, I am dismayed a little bit by that.
And, and I guess I, I am, and again, I, I don't wanna sound like I'm making light of the Governors Road, Plymouth Ave people, because I, I understand, they, they get a lot of traffic, and it's, you know, and there are a lot of children on that road, and, you know, nobody wants to see a kid get hurt. But, but they're, you know, we also are a whole town, and, and there are residents that are hugely inconvenienced, that are, that are Milton residents, not being able to get to West Quincy without having to go through the square, because the square's so horrendous.
Right.
And so, whatever solution we come up with, I think has to consider those people as well, that's, that's my only concern.
You wanna take part of a lesson row by eminent domain and build a new road into all the way to Branch Street, Metro Road? I was only kidding, trying to, everything's on the table.
Everything's on the table.
Cunningham trustee, he just had chest pain. You're right there, and as I say, one of these, every time that we have, we try to look at the big picture, all the side streets, all the, but I really do think in this one here, we really need some help with Quincy. We really do. Even in Joe, when we did our, when Joe did his side of the project, we used our signboards in Quincy to alert residents. We deployed our stuff into the city of Quincy. I just think, but I think we can get back there. I, we have a great relationship, police-wise, engineering-wise, DPW-wise, very, so hopefully we can-
But when it becomes a political issue, it gets, it gets different, I know.
And I don't really know who we got, I don't know how, you know, I don't know what his calls were, or how, I don't know.
There must've been a lot of them, it could've been, made it that fast.
If I may comment, as a lot of people know, I grew up on Governor's Road, and I've lived that street for years, and I look out there and I see Ginny Doyle, and Ginny Doyle has lived on Governor's Road for years and years, and if you've lived on that street for years and years, you know it's got a serious problem, and you know, if you lived there for a lot of years, that the problem has increased. At one point in time, I used to be able to play on Governor's Road, although I can say that my brother Danny got hit on a tricycle, not seriously hurt, but that was way back when, when there were very few cars. And I'm hoping, I'm, I'm personally, I've been on this Governor's Road situation for years. I was one of the rock people in nineteen seventy-eight, some people referred to me as the leader of the rock people. I don't know, I just know I was very concerned with trying to help my fellow residents solve a problem. The problem is still there, and I commend the Traffic Commission for trying to deal with it, and also the fact that when you, they've tried to deal with the Governors Road problem, they've been fully aware and understanding of the neighboring streets, be it Plymouth, be it Grafton, not wanting to displace the traffic onto those streets. That can, that's gonna be there, that's gonna happen as we move forward towards a solution. I think it's our responsibility to provide safety for the residents and the kids of all streets in this town, and when you see a problem, you've gotta go after it, and go after it, and go after it, until the problem's solved. I've seen some solutions, solutions on Elliott Street where there's some traffic calming, I've seen stuff on Hillside Street, I've seen improvements, in my opinion, in the past year, down at the corner of Adams, where Reservation Road cut through traffic in the evening, Waldeck Road cut through traffic in the evening, Otis Street cut through traffic in the evening. It's, it's been addressed, it's been reduced, and from my talking with those particular residents, there is a little bit of inconvenience if they wanna swing in from Adams Street, but they don't care, their kids are safe, and they're satisfied with the improvements. And the people of Governors Road, there's more children on that street now, I know there is, I was at their block party recently, and there was a lot of children, and yet we've, we've got an obligation to be concerned about the children on, on any street. And I was concerned, and still am concerned, that this idea of the, the barrier while Quincy was gonna do their construction work, the solutions in that problem was being dealt with, and I was at the meeting, but I was doing mostly listening, because they had the Quincy DPW Commissioner Remundy and Mr. Lynch, very, both very knowledgeable about their particular communities, both very knowledgeable that we were talking about a, a mutual problem. This isn't a Milton Governors Road problem, it starts up on that hill on Governors, where it's now paved, and if you put your car in neutral and go down that hill, it's like, if you can remember Paragon Park, it's a roller coaster. That's, that's the truth of the matter, I did it recently, just to try it out. I like to know what I'm talking about.
And they took the speed bumps out.
Yeah, the speed bumps aren't there right now, that's, if you go to Quincy, it's a roller coaster now. So, the Milton residents got a roller coaster facing them, but what the good news is, the meeting that they had at the Common Market, the Quincy residents of Governors Road were just as concerned as the Milton residents of Governors Road, and the way I feel about it right now is, we all need to desire a solution that reduces the volume, somebody mentioned or questioned where the volume came from, I can tell you a fact, the fact is that in August, and I believe it was two thousand eleven, this is in August, the summertime, the northbound traffic had a registered count of two thousand, and I get that statistic from John Thompson, who, who is the Assistant Town Engineer that performed that count. So, that's proof that you've got a lot of traffic going down that street, particularly northbound. It's our responsibility to stick with that problem until we find a, a solution to it, and I think maybe like, if, if they're having an October twenty-fifth meeting at the Elks, we went to the Common Market meeting, we weren't invited, but I think they were happy that we went. Why don't we ask, let them know ahead of time this time, that we'd like to be present at their meeting to discuss a mutual problem? And, and as Chief Wells says, let's see if we can work with them and see if they'd wanna come up with a solution.
Doesn't attribute the quotes, I'm not sure who's actually saying that having the meeting. It doesn't say what time, so we'll look into that.
We'll go if you want, just to listen, and we'll kinda see what they-
But what about if we let them know that we'd like, certainly like to come?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah. And I'm sure Councilor Brian Palmucci will be there, because he's the ward four counselor up in that area.
Again, you know, like I said, it's, we, we clearly have a problem, we have a problem throughout the whole town, there was way too much traffic in the entire town, you know, Governors Road clearly is a cut-through, there's no question about it, and, you know, until or if we can ever do any, or the state can ever do anything to actually make traffic flow on the expressway, I mean, it gets worse every year, I mean, it's not rush hour anymore, it's, it's Sunday afternoon at two o'clock, you can't get down the damn thing, so it's, you know, it, it, it gets worse every single year, until I get better, East Milton's gonna be bad, and, and, and the entire, you know, the entire East Milton, all the side streets are gonna be bad.
There are six ways out of the city of Boston.
Yep.
We have five, six bridges, that's it. Five come through our town.
Exactly, exactly, so, you know, so, so it, we need a solution, but it's gotta be a town-wide solution, that's all, so, you know, that, that, we can't, we can't-
We won't give up, we promise.
Okay.
Promise.
Just keep us informed.
Okay, we will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, so, you know, back up to-
I just, Mr. Chairman, I just have a thought.
Sure.
Since it was Mayor Clark who ordered the removal of the barricade.
Yep.
What if we have our town administrator write a letter to him saying that we discussed Governors Road, Plymouth Avenue at a recent meeting, and we would like to attend your October the twenty-fifth meeting for further discussion?
Okay, I mean, I have no problem with that, is he gonna be at that meeting, or?
Well, he may come if we send him a letter.
City council meeting?
Yeah.
Is it the city council meeting you're talking about?
I'll send it tomorrow for you.
I don't know, but at the, at the Common Market meeting, they just had, they had a room, so if they have something at the Elks, I'm gonna guess that they just-
Okay.
-gonna have the hall.
Okay, let's get on with the meeting, 'cause we do have quite a bit more to get through. So, we're up to item six on the agenda, which is the town administrator screening committee update with Mary. Finally, Mary. How you doing?
Good, thanks, how are you all?
Very good.
Good, good.
I understand you've had your first meeting of the screening committee.
Right, we met on Monday evening, and the main reason we're here this evening is because we rewarded your charge, and we wanted to check with you and make sure that was going to be okay.
Right.
And the other reason was because we developed a, an advertisement in order to advertise the position, and we also wanted to run that past you before we put it into print.
Okay, and I, I have read through, I assume everybody's read through the, the advertisement, I, I think, I personally have no problem with the advertisement, the-
The charge?
Well, before we get to the charge, the, the job description, right now, the job description, and, and I think we have another job description from Leroy Walker, who's on the, the screening committee, which we just got a day ago, and, and, so I, I think for right now, in order to give the screening committee at least a job description, we probably should go with the one that the MRE has come up with, at least temporarily, which is kind of a generic job description, but at least it gives you something to start with.
I think the one from Leroy is, was on a recommendation for what the town could look like in the future.
Well, that's, that's the problem, yeah, that we want a job description as to what the job is right now, you know, we may have a vision of what the job may become, but, but we certainly can't put that out there as, as what the job is.
Right.
The job description that Mr. Walker provided to you was one that was developed by the Town Government Study Committee, which I also happen to sit on.
I think it's more-
And it is meant to be a forward look to what the town might want to consider, which is what we're charged with on that committee, which is to look at all town governance and see whether there should be revisions, changes, or other manipulations. So, that became one of the issues that we addressed, and what he forwarded to you today with a, I thought, a very good explanation of where we were coming from on that, as the cover letter, but that was the job description that the committee, the Town Governance, Government Study Committee developed, and certainly we're aware of the fact that the position is being advertised now, the job description as it exists now is one that we have to run with, and the job description that Leroy produced for the committee, which was sent to you all, was simply a projection of what the job may come, come to down the road, obviously, with the changes in the bylaws, or the home rule petition, vote at town meeting, you know, in whatever order that is supposed to be, yeah.
Okay, and, and the change in the charge is basically because it's too short a period of time, or-
Right.
We gave you, what, originally, a thirty-day charge, come up with a-
It was a thirty-day charge, and we felt that was actually, you know, very risky to expect us to come up with a good recommendation, particularly because when the advertisement goes in, which we're hoping occurs next week, we're going to take resumes until November thirtieth, according to the advertisement.
Yep.
So, that immediately would be a problem with your original charge, which required a thirty-day report after our first meeting.
Yep.
And since we've already met, you know, that numbers just became unwieldy. So, what we're, what we recommended under the new charge is that not more than sixty days following the application deadline. The application deadline in the ad is November thirty, that would bring us out to January thirty on the outside, when we would present recommendations to the board.
January thirty, is that what you said?
Yeah, so sixty days from-
Well, sixty days from the application date, that's our adjustment or our revision to the charge, and that's why we're here, is to make sure that's going to run with you all.
Yeah, just to kinda do that.
Part of the problem, obviously, is you've got major holidays in here that you have to kind of compensate for.
It seems like a long ways away, but-
Right.
You're right, the holidays.
We're also going to be doing interviewing, and that is also a difficult scheduling situation. We have five people on the committee, and Maria's been very graciously helping us out, and will continue to do so, has offered to continue to do so, but, so we have five schedules on the committee to deal with, plus the schedules of whomever we may be asking to come in. If we're gonna recommend three to five, I would imagine we're gonna interview minimum five to ten people.
We hope so.
Yeah.
Is it, can I ask, if, assuming you get fifty applicants, you, you don't interview fifty people?
No.
You just, you narrow it down to ten or something?
We would be interviewing the people who we feel are a good fit for the job, whether that's eight or fifteen, I cannot tell you, only based on what we see in front of us. But if the committee decides we need to interview fifteen, then that's what we'll do.
Would you expect to interview everyone in one day?
There was some discussion about trying to do that. Personally, I don't think it's a great way to handle it, I think after the first four to five interviews, they all start to run together, but, hey, I'm strong, I can handle it.
That's what I hear. Okay, so we do have a motion in front of us to approve the town administrator screening committee revised charge, job description, job posting.
Could, could we take those one at a time?
Sure, if you want to, so we first-
Move to approve the town administrator's screening committee revised charge.
Okay, motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded, any further discussion on that motion? Seeing not all in favor, unanimous. Okay, now we have a motion on job description.
I have a question on that, Mary. It says that basically we're looking for somebody to have ten years of municipal administrative experience. What if you got what you thought was a candidate that was a crackerjack, perfect fit for the job, that says he or she's got eight years of experience? Could they still be considered, or would they automatically be ruled out 'cause they didn't hit the ten number?
I, I don't think anyone would be ruled out under the circumstances that you outline. These are preferred qualifications, it doesn't mean that every single one of them has to be met precisely, and certainly what I am expecting is that the group will advocate for the people they see as being good fits to the job, and if somebody advocates for someone who only has eight years, I'm gonna listen to that person advocate.
Right, you can't say recommendation, it's not an absolute.
Right.
So, there's some flexibility.
Right, right. I think if somebody comes to us without a bachelor's degree, that may be a-
A problem.
Yes, yeah.
And, and on that, in terms of like a degree, are you comfortable with bachelor's degree as opposed to wanting somebody to have a master's degree?
Well, I think, you know, we would obviously look for someone with a higher level of education, but that does not mean we would rule someone out who does not have a master's degree, it's, again, we prefer, but it's not an absolute.
Yeah, I think what you have to consider, too, is, and hopefully the committee will consider it, is not only to a person that is able to do the job as it exists today, but somebody that has the potential to do the job as it may exist five years from now or three years from now, and that could be a significantly different job, it may not be, it may be the same exact job, but it could be a significantly different job, it could be much, much more like a, like a CEO kind of job in, in years to come. So, I, I think, you know, unless we wanna chew through town administrators every few years, that we should kinda look to the future, as well as the present.
I make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the town administrator screening committee's revised job description.
Second. Motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing not all in favor?
Excuse me, is it the job description or the advertisement?
I believe-
And this would be the one page?
The advertisement, I'm sorry, thank you for correcting.
That's right, no problem.
Although we did not do, do, do we actually do the job description yet?
Not yet.
Okay, 'cause we were talking about the job description before, that's another thing. Okay, go ahead.
Job posting, right.
Okay, so-
Okay, I, I move- Okay, I move to approve the Town Administrator Screening Committee revised job posting.
Okay.
Or advertisement.
That's fine.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah. Where is the job going to be posted, advertised?
It's going to be advertised in the Globe, it will be in the Beacon, it will be on the town website, and where else?
The MMA website.
Thank you.
Mass Municipal Association website.
I found it very interesting when we were looking for a consolidated facilities director. I was amazed at the amount of applicants coming all the way from Texas.
Oh, wow. Well, we're really looking forward to see what the response is.
You're on the committee, right? Yeah.
We have one more, right?
Yeah.
Well, first of all, we haven't voted this one yet. So we got a motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, now the job description. And basically, the job is, it's kind of generic. It basically just says that the selectmen of the chief executive offices and the town administrator is basically under the control of the selectmen, and explains a little bit what the job is.
Yes.
And I don't know if this is being too technical on that. Towards the last page, under the word skill, bullet point 1, 2, and bullet point 2 says strong analytical skills, and then bullet point 4 says customer service skills. And when I read that, I noticed that I penciled in the word strong. I know that Mr. Cohen has talked about, I have an admission statement up at town hall, and I just think that customer service skills is something that we should always be working to improve on. So I'm suggesting, I'm suggesting just under skill that, on bullet 4, that we just add the word strong.
Do you want to do it on the rest of them, too, with any public relations skills? Or it should be strong public relations skills? Team building skills, strong, I mean, whatever. I mean, I think it's kind of semantics, but do you want strong on everything, or just on that one?
No, just, it was, when I read it, it was, I noticed I happened to pencil in strong besides the customer service skills, and I think I was influenced by bullet number two that had strong analytical skills.
Okay. I mean, again, I don't really have a huge problem either way, so that's fine.
I'll make a motion to approve the Town Administrator Screening Committee revised job...
Yeah, couldn't I just interrupt you? And Anne Marie, feel free to jump in anyway, and I apologize for interrupting you, Bob. This is not the committee's job description.
No.
All right? And what Mr. Walker sent to you today or yesterday by email is not the search committee's job description either.
Right.
Rather, what these are, are job descriptions, one prepared by Anne Marie, the other by the Town Government Study Committee, to present to you for your perusal and for your review and for your thought processes, which may be immediate tonight, you want to go with one or the other, or maybe which you would rather like to take the time and reflect on. And the reason is because what Anne Marie has presented here is in very strong keeping with Chapter 41, Section 23A, which is what our town administrator's function is defined in. And what Ms. Walker presented to you today is a very broad definition of what the position may be down the road after certain changes in the actual governing statutes concerning our town administrator. And this description is actually going to grant far more authority to the town administrator than what you are now seeing in the job description, which Anne Marie very kindly provided to us. And the reason why we were presenting both to you was not so much for a vote at this time, because we will, we have our charge now, and we have our job posting, and we will take resumes based on both of those. But between now and when we begin to review and even interview candidates, we would like a good feel from the Board of Selectmen as to whether the job itself will continue to be very, very narrowly confined to Chapter 41, Section 23A, as described here, or is the Board inclined to agree that some of the qualities described in the newer job description are in fact the kinds of qualities you want to see in the new town administrator, because the Board is inclined to pursue a broader definition of the role that the town administrator will take. And I'm not sure that's a vote you want to take tonight. It may be something you all want to think about and maybe discuss further, particularly when you don't have the crime to crisis like you do tonight.
Given that, Mary, yeah, I would tend to agree with you. I thought you did want one tonight, so...
Did we need one for our purposes, did you think, Anne Marie? I rely on, Anne Marie.
It was my understanding that Leroy Walker's version, which was very well done and prepared, requires, as Ms. McNamara said, some bylaw changes, charter changes, and possible home rule petition changes. However, it was my understanding that the committee, when they start to interview potential candidates, wanted to be able to give them a job description. And that will take place over the next couple of months, and those potential bylaw, charter, and home petition changes will not happen by then. So in order to have a job description that currently reflects what the town administrator does at this point, I felt you may want to approve for now. And then going, so we have a working document going forward with the Town Government Study Committee's draft. That may be potentially down the road what we end up with.
And if I could just add to that, if the Board looks at the job description, the new job description that was provided to you just in the last day or so, and is inclined to think this is a good direction for the town to take, then the job at the time of interview can be presented in such a way as, well, yes, the history of the job is that where it's a very narrow job with authority pretty much primarily residing in the Board of Selectmen, and any decision has to be run past the Board before it can be handled. But if the Board has looked at the newer job description and has discussed it at meeting, and maybe has even taken a vote, that they would like to present it to town meeting, that they would like for it to undergo consideration, that they would like for some other government committee to prepare a change, either in the bylaws or a home rule petition, in order for the job to change, then we are able to also go forward in the interviews with these people, not only with the in fact job description as it stands today, but also explaining to the candidates that, yes, this is the way it is, but we have seen how the job has evolved over the years, and the Board of Selectmen has taken a position that they would like to actually expand the role of the town administrator, and is advising town meeting to consider it in the warrant, say in the spring, in the May meeting, or maybe has discussed with town council the drafting of either changes in the bylaw or a home rule petition. Okay? Not to say it will ever happen, because it may get shut down at town meeting, or it may not get that far.
I guess in point of fact, when you think about it, though, you know, other than, other than potential changes down the road, and God only knows if those changes will ever happen, you know, in terms of reorganization and consolidation of boards and everything else, and that's a question for another day, certainly.
Different issues, right.
Certainly. In terms of what the town administrator does, you know, he is not the person that pulls the trigger on anything, that's the selectmen, but he is certainly the key advisor and the point person on almost every single one of those issues. You know, without the town administrator, us three part-timers would be very hard-pressed to make the kinds of decisions that we have to make. So even though he's not the person that makes the decision, he's so integrally involved in the process that, you know, it's almost as if he is.
Well, and certainly, that's part of the reason why we came to the kinds of conclusions that we came to in developing the new job description. And I would strongly urge that you give a lot of consideration to the suggestions that are made in here, because it would actually broaden the authority of the town administrator beyond...
If we give him the authority to be the trigger pole.
Right. And it would define when the town administrator could do that, and still when he could not do that.
Right.
Okay? So, and that really is, I think, how we ended our discussion on Monday night after our first meeting, which was, it would be great to know that the Board was going to actually look at the new description, compare it with the old description, see if there aren't some things that are in here that would sound reasonable, for whatever reason, and give us a direction as to whether or not the Board might support going to town meeting and asking for an expansion of the role of the town administrator.
And those are certainly conversations we will be having over the next few months.
Right.
Absolutely no question about it.
So when you, when you go to interview these prospective candidates, are you going to say to them, we're interviewing you based on the present criteria, but beware, we may ask you to expand your role down the line? Is that what you're saying?
I think that's why we're bringing the new description to the Board, to see if the Board cannot give us some feedback on whether or not this would be something they also favor, which clearly the committee favored, because we voted for it as a recommendation. And if the Board tends to support what is the recommendation from the Town Government Study Committee on this issue of expanding the authority of the town administrator, then the way it would be presented to the candidate is that currently, this is the definition of the job, but the town is considering, and it has many hoops it has to jump through before it can arrive there, but certainly considering expanding the responsibilities of the job, which we feel makes the job more attractive.
Right. That's what I said, yeah. So this is the job, but be prepared, if we get a change, this will be the job.
Right, right.
So why don't we, over our next couple, three meetings, spend a little bit of time discussing?
I think it's a good idea to...
So that we can give the Screening Committee some kind of feedback on what our thoughts are?
It would be great.
I don't know if we can actually come to a consensus on everything in there, but I'm sure we can come to a consensus on some things.
On a few things, yeah.
We'll give it a shot.
And that sounds wonderful. Sounds exactly like what we were thinking of.
Because, I mean, I think Mr. Leroy, Mr. Walker, did a great job, but I don't think we're ready for that yet, you know? We're not going to be ready for these interviews.
Well, certainly, we're not going to have a job that looks like that, because there are many hurdles that have to, you know, even if we do like all the points in it, it requires, it requires law changes that we don't currently have.
Right.
And that necessarily means the town meeting has to agree with us in a lot of those cases, and they may not. So, you know, there are many, many hurdles to go through. We can certainly, you know, perhaps come to a consensus on some of them, that we like them or we don't like them.
Right. And you'll incorporate those into your questions and...
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And you can see that it's going to be a job that becomes more attractive to a candidate who has some very strong background that we're looking for, and who has, hopefully, the ability to bring some innovative ideas to the town, and some ability to really create a broader town administrator job that's going to help the town in a much, at a much higher level, you know?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, good. So I guess my reading, then, Mary, is you don't really care whether we approve this job description?
Not at this time. And if you're going to go for a vote at some point down the road, say in, you know, three to five weeks, we're very happy to come back and, you know, discuss it with you again before you actually take your vote, okay?
So then we can take...
And whether it's one of us or someone from the Town Government Study Committee, you know, we'd be happy to, you know, help you out in that.
I'm a little bit confused.
Yes.
We've approved the charge, we've approved the job posting.
Right.
Are we now saying that we're not going to have any job description at the moment?
Well, actually, currently, we don't have a job description for the Town Administrator Committee.
Why wouldn't we put this in place and then make amendments as we move forward and have discussions?
We could do that if you want.
It would make sense. I mean, it gives us at least something to start with.
Well, I guess the point is, we don't currently have a job description. What we're hearing from the committee is, they don't really care whether we have one at this point, and they certainly have enough to go on with the job posting.
Right.
The qualifications within the job posting is enough for them to go on at this point, you know, because the job description is not going to be published anyplace, other than it's, it will be an internal document. They will see it, I suppose, when they come into an interview. So by the time we do that, I guess we probably shouldn't have one. It would be who must have one.
You know, our deadline is November 30. Maybe by November 30, there could be a, you know, a clearer position from the Board of Selectmen on how they want the job description to read.
So that will give us enough time to go through what Mr. Walker did?
And do both. Give a consensus plus the job description.
Exactly. Then you come back, and we'll give you recommendations as to what we can, what we want to add or maybe not add.
Yeah, or what we might want to see in the future, you know, the, what that vision might be from the selectmen of how the job may change.
Right.
But that wouldn't necessarily go in the job description.
Right.
And it wouldn't go in the job description, because it's not currently the job.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Okay.
We will do that. Because you don't, yeah, you don't want to appoint a new town administrator and then a year down the line, start changing the job description.
And now he's not qualified for it anymore.
Correct.
Yeah. Pretty much, yeah.
So I think it's a good idea to alert him that, or him or her, that it may happen.
But you will want to approve some, some version of a job description.
Before November 30.
Before we, right.
Before November 30, we will.
That's right.
Right. So we have a couple of meetings that we can...
So you could use your generic job description and then incorporate what you feel strongly from Leroy's into this.
And there are things in the job description, we could even take some things from the Town Government Study Committee's, or Leroy's job description, and perhaps by changing it as opposed to is responsible for, you know, coordinates, assists, you know, and put those in a job description. But it wouldn't, you know, the buck doesn't stop here, but he's the point person, he's the assist, you know, the person that assists in doing this, that, or the other thing, which may not be in this job description right now.
Should, so we should go over what Mr. Walker did, and then should we meet an executive session or a public meeting, or...
I don't think we can meet an executive session, I think it's a public meeting.
Go over recommendations?
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Neely?
Yes. What is that on the, okay.
Yes.
Item number seven. Rick, come on up. Discussion of Town Government Study Committee Update. So where are we at?
Well, let's see. We have a recommendation to get going here, and I think it's been distributed hopefully to all the members, and I'll speak to that recommendation. And we actually, obviously, chose not to wait until the full report. We think these are three items that we need to get going on, and we'd like to get this before you and get your support and start getting some of these things underway. So we focused these first three on finance, information technology, IT, as well as PIL, which is payment in lieu of taxes. And the first one really gets into the finance, and I did bring along, I made some copies tonight at 5:30 of some documents that support what we're going to speak to, so I did bring along, there's only four copies here, so, and this one. And I brought along a sample of one of the studies that was done recently. So the finance one, we've met with the town officials, and we've gone through and had a series of discussions at some of our meetings, and, you know, frankly, as we look at this thing, we're recommending that the Board engage the Department of Revenue Bureau of Local Services in a financial management review, and one of the two...
That's a free view, correct?
Excuse me?
That's a free view also?
Yes, that's a, that is actually a service that is a study that is provided by the state, by the Department of Revenue at no cost to the town. They usually provide two or three people as a team that come out to visit the town, and there is a queue, so the... not just the treasurer, but understand in flow chart. And, for example, if you flip over the report in Arlington that was done last January, the back page of the second report handed out, very last page, you're going to see some flow charts, for example, as you get into it, right near the back of that report.
Right, yeah.
And the point is, our committee is not in a position to go out and sit down and spend days interviewing and preparing flow charts for the processes that occur in the town hall or in the school buildings or the cemetery or the parks. There are, the town's business process is a complex process, very complex, and it's very decentralized. And what we're suggesting is that we need a more coordinated approach. We think that we need to have a coordinated approach when it comes to setting financial goals and objectives for the town, as well as the operational priorities. So, even if you think that, you know, you sit down with the Warren Committee ahead of time and you approve a budget, there's more than just trying to get the town meeting to approve a budget. There's really a series of goals that need to be established and set, and it's very decentralized now, and we're looking for better coordination on that aspect. But operationally, we think that there needs to be a lot, you know, better centralization, if you will, or coordination. You can certainly maintain the existing elected boards, but improve the coordination and the processes. Linked into that is information technology. We are going to have, we have a separate recommendation. The second one is on information technology, but it is a key piece within the financial management of the town. It's critical in terms of processing payments and receiving funds. It's also critical in terms of financial reporting. So, that we believe, overall, the situation in this town is in many towns, the financial operations are really fragmented, and we think it makes sense to have a financial management review come in, and it's been done in over 230 cities and towns over the last 30 years. The town of Milton is not on that list, so you will see a list when you go to the back of one of those reports of all the towns and cities that have had studies done. Some of them are very specific, some of them were for a particular issue, some of them were for broad purpose like this. So, in the case of Arlington, in the case of many other towns, they've had a joint effort with the cooperation of the schools. I did have the opportunity with the school committee about three weeks ago to meet with them and to review the progress of the overall Town Government Study Committee, and I did mention this particular program. The chairman of the school committee, Glenn Pavelcheck, is familiar with the town of Arlington, and I did forward to him a copy of this town of Arlington study. So, the results of a study would come back to the board and the school committee if they agree to participate. It's a case where it's entirely up to the board, entirely up to the town meeting to choose to adopt or ignore any of the recommendations. So, there's no obligation. There'd be a series of suggestions, but certainly, you get the resources to have two or three experienced people that have seen what the best practices are in our neighboring towns, and that's, I mean, that's the important piece. There are certainly changes that are occurring in the way businesses are run that the town needs to adopt, and again, there's a series of best practices that other towns have adopted that we ought to consider adopting. So, again, the review would begin by documenting the existing processes and meeting with, you know, for example, the school business manager, as well as the town accountant, town treasurer, the assessors, really understanding, bringing together the entire process. And you'll see that outlined if you, when you get a few minutes to look, you know, after the meeting at the Arlington report.
Yeah, for those of you who don't know Arlington, I mean, I know it from the standpoint of being, you know, on the Warren Committee and, you know, going to the Association of Town Finance Committee meetings over the years, and you just, Arlington is always well-represented at those meetings, have several speakers at those meetings, and you look at the way Arlington is run, and you just go, wow. You know, they're light years.
Well, it's interesting. When you look at the report, what's interesting there is, you know, they've talked initially going into this with the idea potentially of looking for closer efforts and maybe coordinating and overlapping the school business and the town, and that you'll see the conclusion of this, and I did speak to the State Director of the Bureau of Local Services, Rick Kingsley, who was mentioned in this report, that, in fact, they needed some work done on the municipal side, so that the idea of putting things together, they needed additional improvements on the municipal side within just this non-school side of town government. So, it's an interesting, there's not a guarantee that they recommend-
Yeah, there's no perfect, yeah.
It's not a guarantee they'll recommend consolidating anything. There may be that there are existing steps that need to be taken first.
Yep.
So, again, Arlington is actually, in addition to the 230 or so that are listed in the back of the other document. So, they continue to do about five or six of these a year. I talked to the bureau chief, his name is Frederick Kingsley, you'll see it referred in the back of the document. He did have a queue, and frankly, if you were to send a letter, the letter needs to go to the Commissioner of Revenue, and you'll see the directions on page five there. There is at least a six-month wait, seven-month wait, to get them in here.
How specific do you have to be on that request? I mean, in terms of what you're looking for?
Well, you'll see in this document, the one, the document entitled Financial Management Review, actually lays out an outline for you, and it's very general, and I think I can help with you, I can help you with that in terms of framing what we were looking for.
Okay.
Be happy to assist in that and, you know, identify that we would like to enlist the cooperation of all the other town departments, but in particular, the school department, because the school department, obviously, is a source of transactions and it's a beneficiary. So, it's both, it's on both sides of the case, and so, they certainly would benefit by improvements, and they certainly can maybe contribute to the improvements.
I mean, certainly, to not take advantage of a free service seems insane, so.
I think it's, it makes sense to have an outside review. I mean, this is a case where it makes sense, it hasn't been, as I say, this hasn't been done in 30-plus years by a, you know, this particular group. I'm, you know, this is different than your annual audit that Powers and Sullivan, is that the name of the folks still?
Yeah, yeah.
They still doing the annual-
Yeah, they still do the annual audit, yeah, so, which is just strictly a financial audit with some-
If they're still doing that, I mean, you're talking, that's a different approach, and that, you know, does look at some of the management controls, but this is an in-depth review of the processes and see whether there's improvements we can make.
Right.
And maybe in some cases, you know, we're ahead of other people. It could well be the case.
But at least we'd know, yeah. So, I mean, I would, to take these kind of one step at a time, I would entertain a motion to petition the Department of Revenue Technical Assistance Section for, to get in the queue to do a financial management assistance study and to work with the Government Study Committee to frame that request.
Second motion.
Okay, motion made seconded. Further discussion?
I just want to say that in looking at what Mr. Neely said in terms of an appendix on the town and school financial analysis of Arlington, I really think that's a nice chart, town and school payroll procedures, and although I'm not an expert in this, I have had experience on the school committee and now being in the Selectment, and I think that there's procedures like in payroll that can be improved in the town, and I really think that's something that should be looked into, both at town hall and at the school department, to see if we can make improvements and modernize those procedures. I'm not sure if they're as modernized as they can be. And the only thing I did notice is that Arlington seems to have an elected treasurer, when I think payroll. I did get concerned when I saw that a town manager appoints a treasurer in Needham, and same thing in Lexington.
Propline also.
And I personally would, am in favor of the treasurer's position being an appointed position, that the people decide who's in the job.
And a good point in terms of the payroll procedures and that type of thing, because that's closely linked to our next recommendation, which is the information technology, because for the improvements that you might consider in the financial management, you would be relying upon improvements in information soft, you know, information technology, the hardware and software. So, certainly, there'd be recommendations that might come in from that.
My general feel, Rick, is, in terms of, and Amy can correct me if I'm wrong, but we have a reasonably decent accounting information system in terms of its ability and power. There may be some disconnects in how all the departments feed into that, some of which is being corrected now. For example, the treasurer had a cashbook that did not interface with the accounting system for years and years and years. He used QuickBooks, you know, things like that, that just made no sense. So, I'm sure there still are things out there, but, you know, some of those are slowly being corrected, but a whole coordinated IT certainly makes sense, because right now, we have a very small IT department. It consists of two people, and I'm not sure we have a proactive approach to IT. It seems to be more reactive.
Well, that's a, that's a good lead into the next recommendation, and also, in terms of what I'm asking the board to do, is to join with the school department and asking the school committee. So, although I was there three weeks ago, it would be helpful to have the board directly contact the chairman of the school committee and ask the school committee if they'd be willing to participate in both the financial as well as the IT. So, Leroy is a member of the school committee. He's on our Town Government Study Committee, but obviously, he can't speak for the whole school committee.
Right.
So, he was, he was very helpful in getting the initial meeting set up with the school committee, but I think it makes sense formally to go to the chairman of the school committee and ask for their participation. And let's say, if they did not want to, at a minimum, you're still going to need to interview the school business manager for the idea of understanding how the whole town processes flow. It'd be nice if they're a co-sponsor.
Yep.
So, the lead-in for the information technology, that's the second recommendation, so there should be a second page I sent out with a package, and it leads off, talking about the Town Government Study Committee, so, meeting with the various department heads in terms of, this is, again, IT. So, the feeling as we, you know, sat down and went through this is that the town and the school business operations have not kept pace with the most current technology, and that we need better integration and automation in various systems, including payroll, accounting, budgeting, bill payment, and collections. We think that will improve the efficiency of the operations, the quality of the data, and the ability to effectively share data, improve the quality of customer service as well, as hopefully, you know, help the staff in terms of trying to deal with all the customers we have, which are the taxpayers. So, the recommendation here is not a free one, unfortunately, and this is that the town engaged a consulting assistance to prepare a town-wide technology assessment and a strategic plan. Really, the technology changes so rapidly that it's impossible, it seems, I think, for any government, state, or municipal to stay up with it. And really, this is the kind of review and strategic plan that is needed so that you can, for example, even on your capital budgeting, you don't really know what to get on the capital budgeting side for IT until you have this type of plan prepared and have a good understanding of what the newest technology is. I'm not sure if the town is really up to speed on the cloud, and that's, you know, something that needs to be at least explained by a consultant more than somebody like me. So, that's, this one here, as I say, does, would cost money, would require an appropriation, but it's something that we think should get started and may be considered at this upcoming town meeting.
And do we have any number on price for a consultant?
Yeah, I do not. I do not have an estimate of a price, and I would not go through and dream one.
Okay. I don't want to put you on the score.
Yeah, no, I would, no, we didn't, we didn't have the luxury of going out there and calling up some consultants. There are, obviously, there were a few. The Department of Revenue, ironically, does address some of that when they do the financial management, but they may be a source of information as to consulting firms or Mass Municipal Association, I believe, has contacts.
And they probably would be, and there are already a number of large think-tank consultants out there that-
There is the town of Andover, for example, has done actually an IT consolidation, and they spent a substantial sum of money. So, the town of Andover, I'm just looking for an article that I had here from Mass Municipal's publications, and they, so the town of Andover has made this a substantial investment and effort. So, that's a suggestion in terms of, they might be a resource as to who they hired, but otherwise, I'd fall back on Mass Municipal.
And, Mary, would it be possible for you to just kind of search out some, check with MMA maybe, check with the town of Andover in terms of who they use for their consultant?
Mm-hmm.
Can at least consider what the cost must be? The cost is twofold, though. Number one, it's the cost of the study, but number two, it's pointless to do a study if you're just going to let it collect dust, and there's certainly going to be a secondary cost to implement recommendations.
That's correct.
And so, you've got to consider both, you know? You know, can we afford it? Can we not, you know, can we afford not to do it? You know, it's going to be one of those things. Technology is passing us by a little bit, and somewhat current, but like Rick says, you know, we do very little cloud computing out there right now. We have a little bit of it. I think the inspector, the bill inspector, the, what do you call it? The, all the inspection forms are cloud application.
Yes.
But the cloud is basically using the software and the data files to a large degree reside outside of the computers of the town. They reside in the internet, basically, and you access them from there. The advantage is, they're always up to date, so you don't have to worry about IT updates internally. So, it reduces the role of your IT department in terms of keeping current on that stuff, and the accessibility is greatly enhanced because you can access it, access it from virtually any place you have a computer. So, in terms of feeding in, in terms of having to run wiring to various departments, not quite as necessary with cloud computing, so.
We did identify here in terms of, in the bottom half of the recommendation, the components of the strategic plan, and one of the key things here, it's not just the schools and this building. It is really an assessment throughout town government, so whether it be the police department or the fire department, you know, what are the technological needs, and what's the reporting that is, can be, you know, changed or improved, so what's-
Right.
And this includes not just hardware and software, but telecommunications technology. So, you'll see in the bottom half of the recommendation, the components of the strategic plan. So, it includes an inventory and assessment of the existing hardware and software technology of all the town departments, including the public schools, and an assessment of each of the department's current and future technology needs, and identify the challenges and emerging issues and potential solutions for each of the departments in the town. And obviously, a review of the organizational structure with recommendations for hardware and software and staffing. And then, obviously, overall, it should be a three-year plan, and you can tie that into your capital improvement plans with the Capital Budgeting Committee.
Here, Mike, come on.
So, this, and it gave you some basic requirements for qualifications for this, and the hope is that this engagement would not exceed more than three months, so that we can at least get something for the town meeting that would be 18 months from now. I guess if it's one next fall, maybe that'd be ideal.
Yeah. Pilot.
So, do you want to have, do you want to adopt a motion on that one?
Um, yeah, we probably should. I mean, it certainly doesn't, certainly doesn't hurt to get an idea of the cost of, and who's out there that can do it. I think with what's in here, we've got a decent idea of what we're requesting in terms of a study to put out there. You know, we have those, those four bullet points that are the essence of what we're looking for. So, if somebody would want to make a motion to, let's see, what would the motion be? It's not necessarily to, at this point, to seek proposals. It's more of a-
Support the recommendations, support the recommendations and determine the-
Yeah, good point, yeah.
Determine the cost of the consultant and sources of funds to provide the services.
So, make a motion to support the Government Studies Committee, Committee's recommendation with respect to an information technology strategic plan and explore the cost of-
Explore the cost of consulting.
Yeah.
Services.
Yeah. So, that would be basically the motion.
Second motion.
Okay, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
All right, the third one, again, pilot stands for payment in lieu of taxes, and the committee, this is one of the items, one of the 10 or 11 major items that came before the committee. And again, the payment in lieu of taxes refers to the payments or contribution profit organizations within the town of Milton. And so, this is requesting that the board, you know, increase the effort to get pilot payments for the town. The city of Boston, for example, has a very high-stake pilot aggressive program, so members of our committee have certainly interviewed and met with the city of Boston, the president, yeah, let's see, Stephen Murphy, the president of the council, was to talk with him, and brought to our attention that, you know, the payment in lieu of taxes is something that is very difficult to obtain and continue to follow through. I certainly was on the board when we started a program on that, and that's- I certainly was on the board when we started a program on that, and that study was referenced in here. It's something where the board needs to continue to follow up and make a commitment. The assessors have reported and came to our meeting at the last meeting and said that they in fact have an effort underway reviewing pilot payments. So there's an interest in the board of assessors to support this effort. I can't, I don't want to say they voted for it, but they certainly, it turned out we were unaware until they let us know, and Anne Marie let us know that they were...
Do we have a feeling for what other cities and towns, what their procedure, because obviously, there's no legal, I mean, we have no legal teeth to compel anybody to pay a payment of taxes. They are totally voluntary, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
So it's totally voluntary in Massachusetts?
So...
So it's...
Excuse my son, I got to take, real quick. Hello?
Hello.
Hi, where are you?
I can, I can say in any case that there is one agreement already that is, that's regularly payments are made and that's for...
Okay, so he's just going to park it there?
So there's a program with Curry College that the prior town administrator negotiated. There was in fact...
Okay. All right, I got to get back to my meeting, I'll tell the chief. Okay, bye.
I'm not sure it's automatically guaranteed, but there is a report. I was saying, Mr. Chairman, that Curry College has a program in place that was negotiated by the prior town administrator.
Right. You get about, what, 50 grand or so?
I think so, I think that's about right. And that related to houses that I think were taken over, off the tax rolls.
Right.
Milton Academy does provide some compensation for houses that were taken off the tax rolls. I think Anne Marie is able to...
Are they paying real estate taxes on certain houses?
Sure, in houses, and Anne Marie has provided us a copy of a report that was prepared by the Milton Academy business, I guess by the development office really, community. So, but the reality is that we believe that the town and the board should proceed to, again, meet with each of these major nonprofits in the town and secure payments in a dot program similar to the city of Boston. And there's some studies that the committee can turn over that, I think it was the Land Grant Institute, the Land Institute, I think that did a good study, which we have a copy of at the committee level that we can forward to you, that describes efforts in other cities and towns, but it certainly is voluntary.
Look, so here's the problem I have with the nonprofits paying no taxes. I don't mind if they don't pay taxes if they're actually using buildings. But the, I think the study should go into how much land is out there, how many buildings are out there that are owned by nonprofits that are vacant? For instance, and this is in my parish in St. Pius. You've got a huge mansion on eight acres of land on Brushell Road. It's been vacant for four or five years. And it's on the, there's no taxes being paid on it.
And it's owned by the...
And it's owned by the archdiocese, you know? So I don't mind if it's tax exempt if there's somebody living in there, but it's been vacant for four or five years. So is there anything we can do to, yeah, if you're living there, you're tax exempt, but you've got to pay on land that's not being used.
Interesting question, because I think there ought to be research, because I think in the case of St. Elizabeth's, I believe that the house that was just torn down was having taxes paid.
Was having taxes paid?
It was paying taxes. It was paying taxes. So in the case of St. Elizabeth's, if the archdiocese was paying taxes on that building at the corner of Reno Avenue, I think we ought to check out and see whether the archdiocese is paying taxes on the building you described.
They're not. And, you know, next to St. Pius Church is also four acres of land that's owned by the archdiocese. Again, it's my parish, I'm hanging them out to dry, but we need the money.
Yeah. I mean, the building used to be the...
No, it's four, there's, including the church, it's seven. The church is on three and there's four acres next door, yeah.
Well, certainly, this is at the level where the board can decide the organizations it wants to pursue. I mean, we think, you know, if you look at the Boston side, I think that would give you a good baseline to see which organizations are being pursued.
Well, that's true. And I know you met with Council Murphy, and that's what the mayor did last year. He went after all these buildings that went, that are owned by nonprofits but not being used.
And I think you have to look at the scale. You have to look at the size of the organization, you have to look at the size of the property that you're talking about, and start with your biggest nonprofits first and decide organizationally, for example, you have to make policy decisions as to whether you want to go after religious organizations or whether you want to go after other types of nonprofits.
Oh, every, like, you know, you take Curry College, they're paying 56 grand this year. Yet in the last two years, they've put up four or five huge buildings. You know, they're paying on what they had 20 years ago, not today. So that's something that you, you know, you've studied. I'd love to see that being studied, you know?
Well, certainly, in the case of, like I say, when you look at the report that the academy put out, to the academy will describe in that report what other community efforts they're making, you have to decide whether that's sufficient.
Right.
The question is, to the point you just made, have there been increases in the levels of taxes paid from the time the house was purchased 20 years ago?
Correct. And I know Curry has, you know, doubled the students they have from 10 years ago. So it's double our services.
Right. And you have to look and see how many Milton students are on scholarship, for example, and that type of thing. So are Milton students receiving a Milton scholarship, or is it that type of thing? So really, at the board level, you have to take a look at what the practice is in other cities, Cambridge or Boston, Cambridge is another example of heavy academic community, and see what's the practice in Cambridge and Boston and other places.
How can we implement and...
Right. And really, I think the decision should be taken, the biggest ones first, and then pursue and say, okay, what are the contributions they're making and what additional contributions would be appropriate?
I think what you're saying is very well said, and I think that we need to be taking a look at our nonprofits. And I think it's fair that they pay a reasonable fee for town services and that that should be revisited to see what's changed in the nonprofits. Let me ask you a question. Would it be your suggestion that we form a pilot committee to deal with this issue? I mean, it's certainly appropriate to take a look, to revisit it.
I think that would make sense. I think, I mean, that would make sense after, you know, establish the program, establish the policy first, and the committee could help you. I suppose the committee could help you do that. The committee could come up, do some of that. But, you know, the difficulty is, it is at the board level. And I have to tell you that I spoke one-on-one with the head of the academy back, well, 13 years ago, when I was at Slutman, and spoke with her, and she was, you know, very difficult, you know, here's what we're doing, here's what we're doing. And, you know, went back and forth, and obviously, the town was, the town fortunately is able to charge building fees. So when the new structures like the Arts Center went up, the town is able to charge building fees. But when you try to get them to pay for something outside of that specific nature, it's very difficult. And it does take, you know, you just have, I think unfortunately, it's going to take one-on-one cajoling, as the mayor did.
Yeah. Unfortunately, because it is voluntary. You can't compel them to do it.
Yeah, I understand it's voluntary. I'm just wondering what the board's approach would be. I think...
Well, that's a good point. You need an approach, you know, what works. And I guess what works in one situation doesn't necessarily work in another situation, but it is one of those of persistence.
And I think from the conversation that we want to take a look at the current pilot situation.
We've collected a lot of data we can share with you. So we've collected a lot of data, and the assessors are doing some data collection. So there's a study that was done in 98, so there's been some updated information on that.
Do you think your committee, or would perhaps Rick's committee, deal with that and then be...
Well, I suppose you could go to a Curry or to a Milton Academy and have some research first in terms of, well, what town services have you received and what's the value of those services and what are you paying us and...
Yeah, I think you'd want to have a smaller committee, I mean, you know, a small committee of three people maybe, you know, that you would have directly reporting to the board that would in fact do that research and say, okay, just get the additional information as to what other efforts are being made. And at least reach out to them to start with and then come back to you with the formal policy recommendations.
Yeah, probably makes more sense.
So here's Rick's suggestion, like a committee of three to deal with that and come back to the board with its recommendations.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, and I guess necessary, I mean, there could be a role of a town administrator in terms of kind of coming up with that. Right now, it's kind of a lot to throw on Anne Marie, where she's got so much else on her plate, but, and we don't have a, you know, a full-time town administrator to throw it on at this point. So maybe if we're going to pursue it, it necessarily would have to be put out to a small committee at this point.
Yeah, and I think in the past, was it small committees?
It was a committee of three back in 98.
So, yeah, I have...
Why don't we do that?
So you're making a motion to establish a...
I moved to establish a pilot committee comprised of three Milton residents to be appointed by the board of Slutman.
Second. Okay, motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none holds in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Chairman, that's the balance of my report, and we'll keep plugging away and I'll help you on tracking that.
Now, is it December 1st you're supposed to come in?
Well, I think the appointment's end November 30th, so it depends.
Yeah. Well, we can easily reappoint you, that's easy.
I think the December 1st date was a date that you had directed, was that correct?
Yes, I think so, yeah.
Yeah, so in any case, there's also separately, in the town meeting, as spoken at a couple times about a report.
What, yes.
So it seems to me it's going to, it's a progressive report, because as we finish things, rather than hold it, we need to get it to your attention.
Just come, come to us.
And in this case, get in the queue.
Okay.
So outside of this, I'll help you with the content of that financial management review.
That'd be great. That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Thanks, Rick.
Thanks.
Okay, number, let's see, we got a whole bunch of police department things.
Police department.
So, Chief, why don't you come up? Now, is, one of the things that I don't, I don't see it on the agenda, Anne Marie, but are we just going to cover it in police department update? And that is the, any...
He's going to speak to it.
Okay.
Can you do it, please?
Yes, okay. But my concern was, just to, for the, because it's really not pressing the agenda, I'd ask Anne Marie to have the chief just, you know, this whole state drug lab thing and all the people that are potentially going to be, you know, set free.
Freed.
Freed. And just a curiosity, I mean, certainly, I'm sure that there are some with Milton connections. I don't know how many, so just to kind of get a feel for potentially, I guess, how many, and if we have any idea of how we're going to deal with it, if we're going to deal with it, or...
From a police perspective, the good ask, the good part about criminal justice system is we determine who enters the system, who exits the system.
Right.
I can't tell you without divulging publicly, the district attorney has provided me with 65 names already of 65 individuals incarcerated.
That are Milton connected?
Well, they were Milton connected, yes. That there was an excess between our police department and that chemist. And that was about 10 days ago. But just my own feeling, just seeing how this case is unraveling, we will be years into this, I think, I think this will be pretty dramatic in the long term. Just not just how many people will be freed, how many convictions will be overturned, how far-reaching this may be, and lastly, how this will affect the criminal justice system within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Right, right. Are several of these cases cases that could be retried or, you don't know?
There has been nothing more than the list and the names of what the case was.
Yeah.
I don't even, I mean, as you saw yesterday in this county with our own DA's office, one prosecutor had to resign because of a relationship with that chemist. So as I say, I know that the state police unit that is working this, working this very aggressively, it's overseen by a very high-ranking official within the state police, and I wouldn't even want to speculate as to where this may go. But I can confirm for you, 65 cases have already been, which in the realm of, within Norfolk County, I believe there'd probably be other communities that may have doubled it three times that. And it is significant, because any time you let someone free, you know, that should have been incarcerated, rightfully so, because of a technicality committed egregiously by someone in the criminal justice system, as I say, the long-reaching effects in this, I can only imagine what will come out in the long term.
Right. And my big concern is, you know, that obviously, we're still feeling the effects to a degree of the whole Tucker neighborhood and, you know, what occurred down there earlier this year. And, you know, I suspect that if there are people released, the biggest impact could be, well, be that neighborhood again, and I'm not sure of that.
Yeah, I'm not either. And I didn't even really look, you know, I looked at the cases and the names. I didn't go much farther than that because I've not received any guidance or any information as to how the DA is going to move forward on any of our cases, so, but I will...
Keep the board calm.
...tell you something, just as, I've kept you abreast of this, we talked earlier today about the woman who was indicted for manslaughter, who worked at a house on Kaler Avenue, is a mental retardation house, she was arraigned today in court to court. It was a long, drawn-out process, and I expect this to be the same. I'm just not sure how this will fall. And the whole, I think that they've only probably just scratched the surface of how she actually operated and what she actually did.
So in terms of other police updates, what do we stand on, anything?
Busy on Governor's Road.
You know that.
No, things have been relatively quiet. The two big criminal aspects that still remain on our radar are residential burglaries and car breaks. Those two still were down this month, were up last month, and we tend to have peaks. There were some arrests made as a result of breaks last month, not just here, but these tend to be regional metro Boston-type of perpetrators. And so once you take that group off, things will go down, and then, you know, you have to be constantly vigilant. I say that at every community meeting we go to, every time we post something, you know, make your house look occupied, lock your car doors at night. There was a car broken into, I think at 6 o'clock last night, between 6:00 and 7:30 over in East Milton. The gentleman was actually home, he heard the car alarm go off at the, when he went back out later to see, the window was smashed out and his GPS had been taken. So it's, and it's not that, we don't think about crime all the time. It's not, it's not to be, it's not fear that we're trying to have people become, it's just we really need to be cognizant somewhat of our own personal protection, including our properties and our homes, things of that nature.
How is the hotline working? I mean, was there some...
Excellent.
Is it getting more use now?
When we went from, when we went, and it's funny here, listening to Mr. Neely talk about how the importance of technology and growing techno, you know, technically, as society does. When we went from having people just calling the phone and just using a, you know, 698 tip number to emails and texts 10 times, we get them all, we get them from other communities. We get them from all over the place. So in that aspect, and, but I'm not surprised in this community because of, as you've all seen, by the number of community meetings we had, especially in the compliments we had down off of Lowell Bull Lab last year, the community here is excellent, very receptive, very interactive. Their outreach, their, they're, they're great. I mean, we have some really good partnerships here on this, and that's, that's just, you know, one of the good things about this community. Traffic is not, but community partnership is. And so on that aspect, and we have to be there, because just as much as traffic, majority of our traffic becomes because of our proximity to the city of Boston and just that urban influence every day, the same is true sometimes with crime. You'll get that urban push out, that urban pressure, and we're cognizant of that all the time.
Speaking of traffic enforcement, one of the things, and I'm not even sure if it's true or not, but just in terms of overnight illegal parked cars, especially coming, again, out of the Tucker neighborhood and some of the tighter neighborhoods where they tend to park on the street overnight, how good are we doing at enforcing overnight parking?
Here's, I can answer that before you do.
You got a ticket?
My daughter got a ticket last night, and she was only in the house for about two hours, so they're, they're right on it.
Okay.
I will say this, that because we've been so aggressive with overnight parking, this building is inundated as we are with people looking for hardship parking for all-night parking permits. And one of the things we're trying to do is, we can't allow you to use that just to skirt the all-night parking. So we're trying to be, live within the criteria of the policy, even though we understand, and I've said this publicly, the house that 30 years ago probably had one car, today might have four cars.
Right.
And we try to be cognizant of real hardships, but just because we tag your street three or four times, don't come and look, think that we're just going to give you a hardship permit, because we're not, because we could easily gridlock a community. And there's obviously a reason why this town invoked an all-night parking ban, many that predates all of us.
Yep.
And there's a reason for it, and so we'll stay on top of that as always.
Okay, good, good. And the only other question I did have, and I'll open up to you guys too, but, and the thought occurred to me, and maybe it's just old-fashioned, but just the thought of having having in our two business districts, because they're not very big, more of a presence of, I mean, we, the old beat cop is gone.
I know.
But in, in, at least in the squares, you know, in, in the, in the business districts, whether it's a, you know, a policeman on a bicycle or, you know, just something that, you know, is a little more presence, plus it's a little quaint too, you know, but I know it is an expense to it.
No, and I will say this too, and we talked earlier today about just how the economy, you know, we're down five police officers, when you take that five away from the equation, it's all these little things, you know, some are walking, spending a couple hours in the square, we've had very few people even on bicycles this year because when you're 50 instead of 55 and then vacation, someone gets hurt, you're at 45 and you're trying to, you're trying to keep your head above water. I do think we're going to have to address this somehow to get back, there's a reason why, you know, several studies have said you need 55 police officers to police this community effectively, and that's not even looking at, you know, having a police officer sign full-time to the schools, you know, things, things that we put a lot to, and you're right, I, I absolutely agree that it's the little things of detail that create the impression, that create the, and we're going into our holiday season now and those things that you're talking about now, very important, people in the square, people in
The kids loitering.
Very much, yeah, absolutely.
That kind of thing, or just the, you know, the issues we have with, you know, the right on red and, you know, maybe, you know, people would be less inclined to kind of, you know, not stop at that red light and, you know, you know, if there's a police officer kind of walking through the square, you know.
I will try, let me, you know, we have significant resources assigned to this Bell Bar, Lower Bull Lab, Tucker neighborhood projects, and that's a significant, that's two people, seven days a week. Let me look at a plan of what we can do for Christmas, at least to get us through the holidays for just that, the Central Ave, Mil- Lower Mills, East Milton, that be all right?
Sure.
And I can have something maybe by November 1st, the first week, and I'll get it up to you, if that's okay.
Right.
Did you say there's still police officers down in Bell Bar?
Yes.
Yeah.
But we asked, we've been footing that ourselves the entire time. I know that Representative Timotee and Senator Joyce and Representative Dosinafore worked to try and get a, and they came very close, but that didn't happen, that gets cut at the last minute and so, just as I, you know, the governor's traffic issue, we're committed to that, that neighborhood requires the attention we give it to. Now, I think by the 1st of the year, I'm going to have to come to you and we're going to have to rethink this, how we do this long-term, because it's a significant expense right now is the way we're doing it. And clearly, from where we were when we were all standing in West Clark and Baptist Church a year ago with some very anxious people, we've really built some very good things and the proof is in the point that we've had no significant crime issues in that neighborhood sense. Not to say it can't happen, but we've done very well and as, again, if just the interactions and the partnerships we developed on those streets over the past nine, 10 months, that in itself, keeping that together, will, will pay benefits long-term for all of us in this town.
I just have one, if it's okay, Tom, police details. I, I noticed that obviously there's a lot of construction going on, I noticed a lot of Quincy police.
Right.
Is that because of your shortage?
Yes.
But then you sent out a, or somebody sent out an email this week with the amount of money that's owed.
True.
The police department, that we've already paid out, the town of Milton has paid, correct?
Right.
And we're owed from?
Contractors, yes.
Contractors and N-Starr, what's the procedure to get that money?
Right, and that's, we've, we've had several meetings and the, the difficulty has been, and this is long-term, and we're much better than we were, it's one person, part-time, trying to collect, it's not usually the big, it's not the N-Stars, the Verizons, the, it's, it's not Curry, it's not, it's, it's, it's the smaller contractors who might come in here once or twice, do a small job, or what we've found out just recently, someone who's on a state list that has, is the link with the state, we're not aware, that's one, probably one of the bad things about contractors and details is, there's no real intelligence shared amongst police departments, who pays and who doesn't. But we are looking, just from an administrative point of view, Amy, Anne Marie and myself have met, we've looked at a system, it's a very antiquated system, it predates me, it's duplicate, it's triplek, it's, it's.
It's like a spreadsheet, right?
Oh, that's exactly right, it's paper and spreadsheets, and, and it's really one of the few things in the police department that isn't automated, so we want to update that. You are correct though, that we need to put something in place that's a little bit more diligent about collecting because one of the things is, you know, that hurts you in free cash, the beginning of the year, when you start whatever is outstanding and not paid. So you are right, and it's, it's not an issue just for us, that's the city of Boston, state police, almost everyone, but because I almost wish that like, we could be like a hotel, we discussed this earlier, I don't know any community that doesn't.
Swipe a credit card?
Yeah, like you, you call and say, you know, I'm so-and-so construction, I, okay, we'll swipe your credit card, or PayPal or something, to guarantee, because we're giving you resources that day when you order it, but yet we could be a year chasing you. That's what I would love to see us work towards, something like that, because they could do it, they could do it. They don't go to Home Depot and get it on, you know, good looks, when they need, you know, materials and things like that, they shouldn't be able to do the same with the police officers because you are, we bill a lot, I mean, granted there's a 10% administrative fee that goes to the town and to the general fund to help offset the payment of this, but there's a, details, annual bill allowed is, is quite a bit of money in this town because there's just so much construction. But you're right, you're absolutely correct, we need to, we need to stay on top of that.
Is there an application they fill or they just call?
Oh, we take their, you know, their billing, their tax ID, all that stuff to, so that we can bill them, but, and it's, say, it's not usually, it's not the Verizon, it's the, sometimes it's a resident, who calls, I'd like to have something in my house, I want to have a police officer, and then they don't pay. It's not the, that's not the, but there are a couple cases of that. And we try to be, we all, I mean, everything we do in the scout, we try to be consumer-friendly, but you're right, it's a lot of money and the details aren't cheap.
And not cheap, I know firsthand, but it's, ultimately, it's the, it's the Milton taxpayer get caught, you know?
Correct, that's true, that's true. But that's ultimately, I'd love to see something where you could use like a credit card or PayPal so that the money you're guaranteed when you, almost like when you do a construction, you know, you, you make people come up with a bond, it wouldn't even have to be that big because it's not the big jobs, it's the small little jobs.
Small payment bond.
The ones that we get burnt on, yeah.
Sounds like the solution would be they, they pay upfront.
Oh, yeah. Make life a lot easier.
In Milton, is there a four-hour minimum?
Yeah, almost everywhere has a four-hour minimum.
Right, so what probably happens is, they get a police officer for an hour to deliver sheet rock and, you know, the police officer shows up 15 minutes late, which is normal, and.
Right, Milton.
And they don't want to pay four hours for one hour, you know?
I agree.
So then you're.
Oh, they don't want to pay eight for four, the same thing, they don't want to pay eight for six, and that's.
So it's a lot of money, I'd look into something, I'm not sure what the answer is, but there's got to be something out there.
I think the biggest one that owes us too, we looked, we found that there was a pattern there, they were delinquent, not just to us, to like the state police, like to some other communities. It's not, we've taken people to court, it's not unheard of for us to do that.
Obviously in this county too, you have people bankrupt.
Oh, yeah, they climb chap.
Yeah, I mean, you're going to have a certain amount of bad debt.
We'll do that.
No doubt about it.
Which is I think why the town went, it used to be a dollar an hour and that's why we went to the 10%, to kind of give you a bigger sauce fund to absorb these costs a little bit.
Yeah.
But Mr. Cohen's correct, it still ultimately comes to the taxpayer.
Anything else? I've got a question. What if a person thinks that there's suspicious activity going on in the house next to where they live? What is the quickest way and the best recommended way for a person to report suspicious activity, but they want to stay anonymous?
Anonymous.
Because the activity is going on next door to them and they don't want repercussions like their car smashed or damage to the house, how do they, and they're not sure of, they just notice stuff going on, what's the best way for them to contact you and stay anonymous?
Two, I'd give you two, I'd say two ways. Clearly, obviously, if it's something imminent, you know, like it's ongoing at a house next door and they're watching and we need to come right away, they can just dial 911 and call us and even though we know who you are, we're not going to press that, we don't, if you don't, you know, it's common to say, I don't want to give my name, we're still going to respond in the same way. Is it helpful, sometimes if it's a case really develops that we knew a reliable caller, the courts just look at it as a named caller with much more weight than the unnamed caller. But in the imminent thing, we watch your car right away, in the long-term, it's something like into the neighborhood, you know, something where, you know, you think my next-door neighbor might be getting involved in something illegal, may be drug act, in that way, I'd say email us, use our crimetips@mpd Milton, or they go through the town halls website, and a lot of people use it.
All right, if they email crimetips.
Tips.
What was that again?
At mpd Milton dot org.
MPD Milton dot org. And they type in that they think there's suspicious activity going on at the house next door, when they email that in, are they identified?
Yes, but their name is anonymous. In other words, identified, like we could track their IP address if we want, but we won't. They write their name anonymous, and we probably, when you ask, back to the question that you asked earlier, that alone is bringing a lot, a lot, far more than, than picking up a phone. It just seems that we live in the, you know, texting is big, people, they're not objective at all, they're not apprehensive at all to doing what you just described.
Because you have like 50 police officers, that's 100 eyes, you have 26,000 citizens.
That's a lot of eyes.
They have their eyes open and they can accurate, report activity of wrongdoing and so on, that's very helpful.
If 999 times that turns out to be nothing, it's the thousandth that will be huge, and that's how we try to convince each resident, each person, you might not think it's that significant, but it really is. There was a resident on Elliott Street, we had a series of breaks last month, resident on Elliott Street emailed me the next day, he watched a kid come, and one of the things we talk about on the house, on the, telltale signs, a residential break in the town of Milton is if you see a person go down a driveway, because they're almost exclusively rear entries, rear door, rear window. You see someone walk down your neighbor's driveway and you don't know who they are, that is like a red flag. So in this case, the gentleman saw him come down, he watched him come, he was inside the house, watched him come around to the back door, peek in, go around, walk back around the front, and then he confronted him. Most burglars have some type of, some line ready, I call it disarming statement, ready for you right away. He said, oh, I'm trying to find this T station, right away, you know, you saw, that kid left that house and broke into two houses across the street. So, but he didn't call, he didn't, he, he didn't pass the song until a day late, it's, so that's how I just say, 999 times it may be nothing, but the 1,000th time, the successes we've had, particularly in the Elliott Street, Cape and Street neighborhood this year on arrests, came from residents who saw it, saw one of those little red flags, picked up the phone, we were right there, made an arrest. It, it's, you're correct, 50 sets of eyes, it's not enough, but 27,000 sets of eyes is a lot.
Right.
27,000 informed eyes is a real lot, and that's everything we try to generate in our messages from patrol officers and the people on there that they interact with, to every meeting we go to, that the mission of public safety in this community is just as much for the residents, like all of us, as it is for those who wear this uniform.
Do we, do we have crime tips of any kind up on the web, police website that might work?
Uh, we post them, we're different ones, like Halloween's coming, that's going to get a whole list, the holidays will come, that will get a whole list. Whenever we go to our meetings, we, we talk, and the tip, the biggest tips that we publish a lot is the part about when you go out, you know, when you go to bed, you know, you go in the house, lock the car.
Right.
When you leave your house during the day, try to make it look occupied, leave something on, you know, make sure you lock your first-world windows in the summer, lock your house, and for neighbors, if, if, like, if I live next to the pawn, I know she's away, kind of pay attention to her house a little bit, because it's, most breaks, they're not happening now, they're happening when we're at work.
Yep.
Monday through Friday, 9 to 5, because they know this is a residential community with a huge influx to work every day.
Right, that'll think, can you take my mail in?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, take my barrels and don't leave the ba, you know, things like that, it's just, those are little signs that the burglar's looking for, that are going to help him decide on, your house is easy, but your house isn't.
Right.
That's, that's it. So in that aspect, tips like that we do all, because they say, for us right now, residential breaks and car breaks are the two, two things that not just us, all metro Boston's experiencing a big headache. Is that okay?
Okay, any other questions for the chief or?
No.
Good.
Next order of business we have, which is also police related, is the approval of the mutual aid agreement. Chief, do you want just to explain for everybody here what, you know, I, I mean, I basically know what the mutual aid agreement is, but what, you know, what the benefit it gives to the town?
And if you could mention the towns as well.
Yeah, so this is a, I'll be here for 45, this 45.
Oh, there is?
Wait, this 45. I will do that though, but I will, this is a.
I thought it was the neighboring towns.
It will be those as well, yeah. This, this is an update to a, an original agreement that the Board of Selectmen signed and entered into in 2002 with Chief Murren. One of the difficult things in, in Massachusetts, going back to common law and we, we saw the governor's road dilemma tonight between two communities, is that in Massachusetts, everybody has one of everything, we all have one police department, we have one. The downside of that is that in the charter of the Commonwealth when we created, East Police Agency only has authority pretty much in their own community.
Yeah.
Which in the year 20, way before 2012, in the past two decades is really true, proved to be a problem. Is, this board knows, there's, there's a crime that happened in this town several years ago, which we've been in litigation with on the federal side, which was really a very good piece of police work, but at, just because of a, an archaic law, an officer went 100 yards after, after a felon into another jurisdiction, we didn't have authority, which created the whole thing.
Right.
So this is just an update going just to, this was the communities around us, this includes all of Norfolk County, this includes a big pieces of Middlesex County, most of Plymouth County, a small piece of Middlesex, most of Plymouth County, little pieces of Bristol. Now, how's that affect us on a regular basis? Not more specialized, big stuff that we've, we belong to a regional collaboration for, but in the smaller things, and we just had one last week on a hit and run, the drunk driver that fled into Quincy, in the smaller things, there's a case called versus LeBlanc, which is the precedent case, the chiefs, the attorney general, the district attorneys have fought against us to try and get this. What we do is use this mutual aid pact to kind of tighten that up, to get, expand our authority, when we have to have it, it's not the normal day-to-day thing, it's actually the rarity of our operations, to expand our ability when we are outside the jurisdiction and something does come up, to give us authority, and the same for people who come here. So this would include, this one here currently includes everyone but the city of Boston, we're working on that.
But the city?
But the city of Boston.
So we do need a motion on this one?
Yeah, you will need a.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve a mutual aid agreement between the town, police department, and the Metropolitan Law Enforcement Council that will serve to increase the capability of our police department to protect the lives, safety and property of the people within our town, and will be in effect until the town decides to withdraw from this agreement.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Let's see.
No, we have one more?
One more, the shutdown of Row Street.
Okay.
Which is just for a very short period of time.
Very short, 30 minutes, 30 minutes, we can handle that, it's for a Halloween parade that's due to take place, what am I doing it? So the 28th, is it on Halloween? 26th.
26th, yeah.
From 5 to 5:30?
Yes.
On Row Street? Thank you. This is a.
Do I have it right? Did I give you that?
Yeah, yeah, this is submitted, 33 Row Street, Halloween Parade, this is submitted from Kerry O'Keefe, Rosnan, and they'd like to just close Row Street between Brooklyn Governors for a period of 30 minutes, they did this last year, we can, we can handle that very easily.
Okay. Again, we do have a motion to approve temporary closure of Row Street that will be coordinated with the police department on October 26, 2012, for 30 minutes between 5:00 PM and 5:30 for a Row Street Halloween party.
Second.
Okay, motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Unanimous.
Just before I go, I saw tonight that you started tonight's meeting with a moment of silence from my father. And I just wanted to say, thank you all, each member of the board who came to those services. I have to say on behalf of my mother and all of my brothers, it was, we were very overwhelmed. And he came here as a kid from Dorchester who just walked across the bridge and wound up staying here. Forty-three years in the police department, and almost sixty years living here. And I can't thank the community enough, but I, the one thing I really want to thank tonight are the men and women that I work with. When I said in my remarks at his funeral that they pretty much locked me out of the police station for two days, they really did that, and I had all the faith in the world. I had, really had no idea how big it would be. I was absolutely taken back, and at the size of it. But the one thing I was really touched by, and I have to make mention of this tonight, is, you know, my father was always very much about the men and women. He just, it's probably the one trait he gave me. But when I went back to work on Monday, I knew that we had had significant help for the wake, the funeral, traffic, and I just expected that, as of course, everything significant, that we would pay that. And not one person took one down.
Wow.
Over fifty tours of duty, and they did that all free. And I am at a loss for words to even describe it, but on behalf of all our family, I thank you. I thank them, all the boards that my father worked with, especially the men and women I worked with.
It was a wonderful hero, I must say, it really was, it was...
He wouldn't want anything that big, but he's...
But, yeah, I know, I know.
So thank you all again.
Okay.
All right.
Let's see. Next order of business we have is a discussion of one-thirty-one Elliot Street demolition. Hey, Joe.
Good evening.
Hi. How you doing?
Sweet.
So what's, where are we on one-thirty-one Elliot Street? Why don't you bring us up to date? I mean, I know somewhat where we are, I know we've got some bids on demo and...
Well, where we are is, we did put the project out to bid again. We received, we received four bids back. And we've, we've done a basic review on them. We asked for two separate prices from the contractors. One, where they would bid the project as if they were, as if all of the material in demolition was contaminated with asbestos. And one bid, another bid where the, where the material was clean. So on, on initial review, at the time it was put out to bid, we didn't have a, a report from a, from a environmentalist as to what was in the building. And so the lowest bid for a, for a no asbestos building was seventy-nine thousand dollars for our portion. And then the lowest bid for asbestos laden building, that's really a poor choice of words, but, asbestos containing building was eighty-six thousand dollars.
Okay.
We've since gotten a report from our LSP, or environmentalist, and they, they weren't able to determine for sure that any asbestos exists. There was one pipe noted by the professional that was way up in the ceiling, that he felt the material on that pipe was suspect, so, whereas he couldn't get at it, he has to consider that it's likely asbestos. So, so given that, I think our initial direction is that we look to accept the eighty-six thousand dollar bid with asbestos. That, of course, subject to legal review of the bid document.
So we can vote that tonight, subject to legal review?
I would think so.
Can I ask, Joe, about the environmental reports? So, so they're not sure if there's any, if there's any asbestos in it?
There was nothing in, within walking area, he walked the entire perimeter of the building on the outside, looking at, primarily looking at the parking lot below.
Yeah.
And then he walked the entire perimeter floor of the building inside. This is a licensed asbestos inspector.
So this was all visual?
This is all visual, and he saw nothing that he even felt he needed to take samples of to send for testing. And the only one issue was the pipe up above. And then he also, because he couldn't access the roof, wasn't able to determine if any asbestos containing material was on the roof. My guess is not, but we may need to look at that a little further.
You pretty confident in his findings?
I, I am, yes.
Yeah?
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was by Green Environmental, they're one of the premier hazardous...
And the two contracts that we're talking about are both substantial demolition contractors.
The NASD, the one that gave us the no asbestos, no asbestos low bid, certainly is a, one of the...
He's huge.
Probably the biggest...
He does all suffered constructions, I think.
Yeah, did a lot of MBTA work, a lot of MBTA demolition, but just we have lists...
The other one is S and R, is that who it is?
And the other one is S and R.
They're, they're pretty...
They're from Lowell, their, their, their list of completed jobs was pretty impressive. Certainly not as big as NASD, but...
Right.
Their resumes, so to speak, indicates that they're certainly capable of...
Why do you think there was such a, such a difference, we'd say, in the, I've seen the other bids. You know, there's a hundred thousand dollars of a difference between asbestos and no asbestos. And this one is only a couple of grand or something, isn't it?
Yeah, there were two that were only a couple of grand for the difference in asbestos, and maybe they feel that they can get in and properly abate whatever little asbestos is in there within the time constraints of the contract.
Right. Were the other companies just going, I think you mentioned it earlier on, Tom, that they were just gonna knock everything down and put it in a dirty landfill or...
Yeah.
Correct, in other words, that's one way of treating a, a, a building of this type, especially where there's some hazard to, to putting a crew into abating, something like that. They can simply bring all the debris to an asbestos certified landfill. There used to be one in Holyoke, I believe, now it may be in New Hampshire. So naturally, that adds to trucking costs.
And then it's mostly concrete and steel, right?
Mostly concrete and steel, a fair amount of wood, because the wood, the walls are wood.
Oh, the walls are wood, okay.
Walls are wood, and wood and sheet rock.
So this company would actually go in, take out the asbestos?
I'm assuming, we haven't, we haven't gotten that far yet with them, but...
And then knock it down?
Given, given the discrepancy of the asbestos containing bids, where some are only allowing about five thousand dollars, others a hundred and twenty, we have to assume that the ones allowing a hundred and twenty are simply gonna truck it all the way to the, truck all of the debris to an asbestos rated landfill.
Right.
I imagine the others, again, I'm guessing on that.
I'm wondering if they, as part of their demolition walkthrough, if they had some environmental guy with them that...
It's possible, or it's very possible, that the person doing the actual bid or estimating could have been certified as an asbestos contractor.
Right.
That's very possible, too.
Versus the other bids that, that didn't have an environmental person with them?
Now, the other thing, too, to keep in mind is, is the, the S and R bid, which is the lowest bid with, if there's asbestos, is only a thousand dollars higher than the low bid if the building's clean. So, so even if the building does wind up...
Seven thousand, seven thousand dollars.
Was it seven?
Seventy-nine to eighty-six.
No, no, eighty-six is dirt, it's only eighty thousand if it's clean. Seventy-nine to eighty, isn't it? It's eighty-six if it's dirty.
Seventy-nine by NASD if it's clean, eighty-six by S and R if it's...
But, but, but if it winds up being clean, and we pick S and R, it's, it's eighty.
Correct.
Oh, correct, yes.
So there's only sixteen hundred dollars worth of difference between the two clean bids?
Yes.
Right, but I think based on the report that we have, we...
There probably is some.
There probably is some, we have to, we pretty much have to stick with the asbestos containing bid.
And then, this bid does not include police details, or...
That's correct, we need to discuss that, and we thought it was best that we handled those separately.
And what about, which I think is gonna be an issue, is where are they gonna park everything? Have they, have they allowed for that? Because we probably...
Oh, no, that's certainly gonna be an issue, that is an issue we have to work out, some of that. Hopefully with the private owner of the building. And then a thought came to me the other day that we, that we could possibly have some discussion with the Rite Aid pharmacy that's just over the bridge. There's a big parking lot just on the other side of the river, maybe I could go down there. So, yeah, that is a detail we'll have to work out somewhat, but...
It certainly would make it much, sorry to cut you off, it would make it much easier if Steve Connolly would allow us onto...
Yeah, they have, they have, they have a small piece of land at, at the back that could serve as some staging area. And there's a, there's a piece of land at the front that could also serve as some staging area. However, there is an oil tank in the ground there, and some of the bidders did express concerns about putting a crane on top of that oil tank.
So they may not want to...
They have to be removed before an operation can actually take place.
Now, I think you had a call for at least one constituent that is concerned that there be some, at least a neighborhood meeting before demolition takes place. Will it be such a meeting?
That is planned, yes. We haven't worked out the details, but we've certainly discussed that, and we're planning that.
Okay.
That's norm, I know it's not normal procedure, but it's something that you as the building commissioner would enforce as sending out a letter anyway, right, to...
Yeah, to your immediate partners. There's a requirement in the building code that you notify immediate partners, but we take that a little beyond, similar to a...
I think that's a good idea, taking it, yeah.
Yeah, given the proximity to the neighborhood, and especially the businesses, especially right across the street, the central cleaners in the garage, I think they're gonna have, be affected by that.
So just to, if you don't mind me recapping, Tom, so it's the, the demolition bid is about eighty grand, eighty-six grand, if it's dirty?
Eighty-six grand, yes.
Right. Plus details, plus the MBTA costs of shutting down the, the tracks?
Right.
Is, do you have an estimate on that?
About a hundred and three thousand.
A hundred and three thousand? To shut down the tracks?
Well, everything, that's, that's...
That's total, total costs, total additional costs.
On top of the eighty-six?
Yes.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's a cost to the MBTA for shutting down the line and busing people from Ashmont, between Ashmont and...
There's electrical shutdown, there's safety engineers.
They have to have an engineer, they have to have a safety officer, the MBTA.
So including the demolition costs, it's about a hundred and...
Another hundred and three thousand.
Oh, so it's eighty-six, plus a hundred and...
So it's about one, one eighty, one ninety?
This fencing of the area, this police, this fire, this DPW, there it is.
Now, we did, we did maximize on our estimate. It's twelve thousand five hundred dollars a day to shut down the tea and bus. If we just end up doing our building, we could likely have that building on the ground in a day.
Right.
As we discussed before. But we allowed for three days, just in case.
Okay.
So we allowed thirty-seven-five for shutting down the tea.
And busing, yeah.
Yes.
And busing, but it may very well be only twelve-five.
Okay.
So, so I think we did, there's some contingency in our additional allowances.
So that's thirty-seven-five, and how did, how, how'd you get to a hundred and three?
Approximately...
We have a list of options that are added in there. We put in, we have to replace the wall after we take out the building. We have to clean out the site, we have to fence the site, we have to have a police detail, a fire detail, DPW. We have to have a Boston detail, because it's, it's on the Boston side of the, of the river. We have to close Central out. There's a list of all the things. We were extremely conservative in the items that we chose. We're sure that we went over in those costs, so that we didn't, we're not coming back and saying...
You need more money?
I missed by a thousand, no.
I get it.
We covered those numbers.
We're hoping to come back and say, we thought it was gonna cost one ninety, it only cost one fifty.
Yeah, here's my hope.
Right.
Right, we were extremely conservative. We actually went over when we thought something was low.
And if everything works out correctly at town meeting, we will have the money sitting inside the reserve fund so that we can access just what we need, and the rest just stays in the reserve fund and can be utilized for other emergency purposes if we don't need it.
And at the moment, Connolly's building is not coming down with this, is that correct?
I have heard that that's the direction they're going. I, I, as far as I'm concerned, the building still needs to come down.
Well, it definitely needs to come down, but, I mean, it's, but do you think it could be coordinated with this take down?
That was always our hope. The Connolly submitted a building permit application around the end of July. And during our whole bidding process, all our discussions were as if Connolly's building were coming down. And even had direct discussions with him, because his, the contractor that had, that he had hired to take down his part of the building has also bid on ours. So it was always, even in the bid spec, there's some language about... How the ideal situation is that this is gonna be a concerted effort. Obviously, I can't speak for Carrick Realty, I'm not sure what the thinking is now that, if, if they have in fact reversed that decision.
Something that, you know, concerns me, I think that what we're doing is correct, that we're taking care of the property that we own in terms of demolition, so that we can fund it. But if you look at the, at the big picture, it, it bothers me, I know what, I know that the, the whole building should come down. That's almost like common sense, it also mathematically, cost-wise, would make sense. And I just think that the whole building, you know, from my perspective, I'd like the whole building, as I'm sure everybody here would, the whole building come down at once. You know, give the neighbors a break. Should we put them through this twice? No, you know, it was...
The only thing that's in our control right now is our portion of our portion.
Our building.
But, yeah, I agree with you, it would certainly make a lot more sense if we could all come down at once.
In a hundred and three thousand extra, Joe, is, have you allowed for potentially having to block off one lane on Central? If we're not gonna use the parking lot next to it?
In the prior discussions with the chief, there would be times when Elliot would be shut down, times when Central would be shut down, and we would try to minimize any time where both would have to be shut down at the same time. But the, the actual final details of whether it would be a complete street shutdown or a partial street shutdown, we would leave that to the police.
Okay.
Because that's the, the area of expertise.
But we, we do have a figure calculated in that hundred and three thousand for police.
Well, I didn't know this, so, this curveball coming. When we did do that, I thought we were gonna rip the whole building down. So our detail, we, I mean, we talked about making this a twenty-four hour operation to get it down and out of there as quickly, and with the least amount of impact on the business community and the residents. So may, from a detailed point of view, it might be less, just to do the, but you're gonna have to go back again, so that's gonna be...
Right, it's still our goal to...
We know that, we know that number. The second issue, though, from a policing perspective. So we're gonna rip down our part, and then the rest of it's gonna sit there? How do we protect it? How do we secure it? How do we keep it, now you're almost creating an Egress for people to get in and out of it?
Well, we're gonna, a wall will go back up.
So we're gonna put a wall back, we're gonna rip down...
We're putting a fence down, too. We're putting a fence along our property line. There's a wall on the second floor.
Wow, okay.
You're right, what you're saying is absolutely correct.
I never knew that, I never knew that we were gonna just look at...
It makes all the sense in the world to take it all down together.
It's just, from a, from a community perspective, from a safety perspective, it's just, just, and I know that's not within an upper view, but just from a policing point of view, it would make your life a lot easier if...
It would make all the residents a lot happier, too.
That's what we were hoping for.
I think in cost-wise, and I, I don't, just my fear is that somehow this winds up back on you again, because he doesn't tear it down in the town, where it's being forced to incur the cost to tear the whole thing down, is, is that something that theoretically might have to happen?
That's not beyond the realm of possibility.
This potentially, town will have to pay for this twice, both on the town's back, that's...
Right. The problem we have, though, the practical problem we have, is there is not enough money at this town meeting to be able to appropriate, to possibly take the whole thing down on our dime. So we have no way, other than through that emergency process through the DOR, which the initial reaction we got is, the building's not there for how long and what condition? You really think this is an emergency kind of thing? So they were a little bit suspect about being able to use that mass general law to, to be able to...
Access.
Just take it down, and then worry about where the money's coming from later. So, you know, if, if that were the case, we'd probably have to wait till May town meeting to get enough money to take the whole thing down.
It's safe to see, yeah, this twice, both times, obviously, you know the roadblocks you're in with the developer, potentially they have to do this twice on the town's back, because I just...
Yeah, we, we, again, it is still our intention that both, both buildings will come down. I'm hopeful that that will work out. I am fearful, and I've said it before, I'll say it again, the building has already suffered a substantial collapse. It is open to the weather, it leaks like a sieve, it's going to suffer, suffer more collapses, there's no doubt.
Yep.
The building may not necessarily wait for the next town meeting, there's no guarantees.
Right.
So I'm hopeful we can be diligent and successful in our negotiations with... So I'm hopeful we can be diligent and successful in our negotiations with Carrick Realty.
Yep, and that's, that's still our goal.
So we, we have to see how all that plays out.
Okay. Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve a contract subject to legal review?
We did not prepare it because I thought we wanted to wait until we got the legal opinion back that everything is fine, so we did not draft a motion for you for this evening.
Legal opinion for?
We sent all of the bids to, Murphy has to me and the hang, Brian and the blank.
Just to make sure that it's in.
Make sure that everything is.
That they are in fact qualified bidders and have made all the.
They need all the qualifications and.
Did you hear back verbally, or?
No, I think we just sent it.
We just sent it, so we haven't heard back.
So, so we can either do nothing and just approve it later, or we can approve a subject to legal.
Subject to it.
Okay, subject to.
Uh, so we can make a motion to approve the S and R.
S and R.
The S and R bid to remove, to demolish one thirty-one Elliot Street, the town's portion at a price of eighty-six thousand?
Eighty-six thousand, one thirty-five.
One hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Second emotion.
Okay, and that is subject to legal review, and motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none holds in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, okay.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you. Uh, now we are going to talk about discussion of East Milton Square project. Okay, East Milton Square Deck Project, we did go to a meeting, we are moving this thing along, it may seem like a snail's pace, but that is the, that is. We do have a lot more information today than we had a few days ago, we actually did submit, and what, what's the green paper and the white paper called, they look identical.
Tom, Emery, Joe Lynch and myself went yesterday, we met with Mass Highway representatives, the, they had a planning for Mass Highway and the federal coordinator for Mass Highway, and with the rep for Mass Highway District Six. Earlier in the day, I had filed a project information form and a project, project needs form, both are required in order to get to the point that you can get a project number, project number is required in order to get onto the tip. The tip is how you get to spend your federal money.
In other words, right now, right now, we could not spend money and put a request in and get reimbursed, it would not happen.
Right. Could you just do those steps again, the project info forms, project info needs, and what was the?
It's a P I, P I F and a P N F.
Okay, and then what came after that?
We turn those in, the next steps is Mass Highway will review those, they'll come up with the goal of being able to point the town to the documents necessary to hire a design engineer. There's a very specific scope of work that has to be developed, and that scope has to have final approval by Mass Highway. We'll, we'll be working with them, they have to take review all the stuff that we turned in yesterday. Basically, what the project needs form said is that we would like the hybrid plan as our preferred project for the area. We did not specify A or B, we said the project, we said the hybrid plan. We are asking to go back and model A and B to find out which one will work, we'll do that in the design engineering component. The issues that we put into the project needs form are issues for signage, wayfaring, bike lanes, cross, crosswalks, so that we have pedestrian bicycle safety issues addressed, which are a requirement to federal anyways. Coordinate, coordinated signalization and the building of the interior plan. Our next steps are, we wait for Mass Highway's district office to come back with their comments, I address those comments, and then we get the documentation for hiring a design engineer. The design engineer will bring us to the point of having twenty-five percent plans, at which point we go back out for public review. We have another big public meeting, and you could, for all intents and purposes, build a project off of the twenty-five percent plans. But should something want to change, should the public not like some part of it, there is an opportunity to go in before you get to the seventy-five. Twenty-five are really close, and as soon as you get it, you put it onto the tip, and by the time you get to a complete set of plans, you're still not at the tip, but you're getting closer. What we have coming off of the tip is high priority funds. We're in a queue, but we're not in a queue for, we want more money, we're in a queue because we're trying to attain money that's already been approved. Which brings me, I have to go back because our project is somewhere about one point four million is what we believe the project will cost. We have a million dollars in construction money for high priority funds. We put in for mass work funds, that's four hundred thousand, but you can only use ten percent of it for design engineering. If I go back and use from my million dollar fund, and I use it for design engineering, I have to pay the twenty percent.
Plus, there's an additional problem there, that the timing of your design.
Will throw six months minimum.
We'll be beyond May town meeting before we can even have the authority to solicit.
To use those funds.
Yeah, and, and, and so even go out and solicit a design engineer would be May, at the earliest. There, there is another route we could go, we, we could, we could do it on our own, in other words, not use, use town funds.
Just for design engineering.
Just for the design phase, not use the, not use, because if we use the federal funds, there's a twenty percent match anyway, so we're going to.
Twenty percent match and a minimum of a six month wait before you can hire the engineer.
Right, if, if we go the other route, we can at least solicit for the engineer, and, and at May town meeting, we can appropriate the funds, and we'll be ready to hit the ground running. But it's still May, but if we wait and use the federal funds, we probably can't even start the solicitation process until somewhere around May. So it will push us back even further. There's a third possibility that they threw out, which is the Brian Joyce million dollar bond. Now, the million dollar bond is a weird thing, and the way they explain it to us is, yeah, this, the legislature approved a million dollars to be kind of earmarked for, for us. But then it goes to the executive branch, and the executive branch really decides, well, do we have enough revenue coming into the state and everything else to be able to actually fund that? You know, so, so we have a, we have a glass or a picture, and, and now we're going to fill it with water, and the water is based upon how much money we have. Well, if it only fills halfway up, then we don't get our million bucks. So we don't know whether we have another million dollars at this point. We have a million dollars on paper if there's enough money there.
We have, they have projects, they have this many projects, they've got this much money. So to look for the bond is probably not a good idea, to look for other places, maybe within the bond itself, to find design funds or engineering funds, that might work.
So we're only looking for a little chunk of money.
We're truly looking, looking in, in the big picture and seeing, can they, will they release certain funds for this kind of a project?
And they might, so we might be able to get a small chunk of that bond money.
Right, we're working on that issue, because we don't want the whole million from the bond, we're just looking for that particular portion for design engineering.
Which money did you say, Tom, that the town would appropriate?
Well, if we don't, if we don't get the bond, that little bond money for the design phase, we could potentially go to town meeting and, and ask town meeting to appropriate the money for the design phase.
We may need to go to town meeting because of the shortage, and that shortage is design engineering.
Figuring it's probably what, two fifty to three hundred thousand for the design phase.
With construction documents.
And, so, so we've got options, but, but it's, you know, it's just the slow wheels of the government process, and, and here we're talking two governments, because you're talking Fed and, and state that you might have gone through. Uh, they also did tell us too that because it still is federal funds, the feds still have to weigh in on, is it a park or not? And that won't happen until we actually get to the point where.
You have to have a plan to give to them, and that's the twenty-five percent plan.
So we gotta, so we gotta spend potentially two hundred and fifty thousand of.
Of our own money.
Of our own money to potentially be refused by the federal government.
Right, and probably unlikely, I mean, especially based upon the, the Plan B, or even the Plan A, I mean, you still have a substantial piece of park there.
Right.
Probably almost as much, if not as much, as is already there, you, you've put a huge amenity to that park because you've added parking to the park. You know, even though the parking, you know, is for other things, it also benefits the park.
Right, I, yeah, you're right, it's unlikely they would reject it.
I, I would say it's, yeah, I mean, there's no guarantees, but, but, but it's not like we're taking the whole deck and paving it.
And just, just for one more minute, if you could just tell me one more time, if we don't go for appropriation from town meeting, and we take the federal funds, then it doesn't cost the town anything?
Twenty percent.
Just twenty percent of the.
Twenty percent of the, yeah, so.
Twenty percent of the cost of the, of that, of the design.
Of the design fee.
Yes.
So some sixty grand probably.
Could that be approved at the May town meeting?
It could be, but we won't even, we won't even, we may not even know at the May town meeting whether we have the approval at that point, I mean, it's, it's at least six months.
We could go, we could go out now and look for an engineering firm that can work with us, with them knowing that they're not going to be able to look at a paycheck for six months. If we do the federal route and we try to use their money, we can't even do that, because we're still looking six months after that, that we know that we have the money available to us. So we're, instead of looking now, we'd be looking in six months from now to get that person on board.
Right, so, so we're going to significantly delay the project if, if we use federal funds. You know, we, we'll, we'll eventually get the money if you use the federal funds, it will cost sixty grand as opposed to the whole thing, and, I mean, I think you probably procure, you probably do the procurement as if it's going to be, you know, the, the same process, using the same forms and everything, as if you're going to be accessing the federal funds, so that if it does wind up going that route, you're, you're able to do that. And still pursue the, the little chunk from the bond money, that if we can get our hands on, you know, two or three hundred thousand dollars of that million dollar bond money, that that's our best bet, our best route, because it doesn't cost us anything that way, but.
But is there some action we should be taking right now, or?
Well, I think the only action we really have to take right now is, I, I think we can, at some point in time, start the solicitation process, I, I think we can put a town meeting article together, because the warrant's going to open and close sometime in January.
January fourth will be the close of the warrant.
So we may as well have a, a town meeting article there, you know, you can always.
Remove it.
Remove it, or, yeah.
I think we also were, we're, if, if that's the direction we want to go in, we know where we can get documents that match up to what they want for that scope. City of Quincy just put up a bid for part of their Adams Green project, we can take that same scope and tailor it to our project, knowing that this is, this should be what we're looking for. We know that we have to approach a Mass Highway audited design engineering firm. Going back and asking which firms have already been, or have recently been audited by Mass Highway will save us a tremendous amount of time, because if we just put it out there, look for an engineering firm, say, yep, we, we like Firm A, and when we get to Firm A, find out that they haven't had that audit, now we're stuck behind waiting for them to have the audit.
They need approved overhead rate.
Find somebody with an audit.
From where?
They need an approved overhead rate, an audit approved overhead rate.
And that's a four month plus process.
So what do you need right now? Or is, is this just an update, or are you?
I think it's just an update at this point, yeah, it, it looks like it's going to be a three-phase project, it's going to be design.
Yeah, we are back to, although we wanted to do it in.
Application, design and build.
It's not going to happen, we have a phase two, phase two is going to be the engineering component.
Are we still in phase one right now?
No, we're finished, we've finished phase one, we're about to jump into phase two, as we do phase two, that is procuring and doing the engineering.
I see, okay.
We can't.
Can't be designed, built.
We can't jump into it until, until Mass Highway comes back and goes, we like your plan, but they accepted it yesterday, they're, they're, they have a checklist and they're going through the checklist.
I'm a little bit confused, this board went on record as in favoring the, the Wiser plan.
Yep.
And now we're talking about cost, and that's where the confusion lies with me, I remember a number of years ago, I saw a picture of Congressman Lynch, I think handing Selectman Mullen a.
Million dollars.
Great big check.
Yep.
Million dollar check.
And I thought that was great, and I'm sure the rest of the people in town.
That check number got cashed too.
Yeah, unfortunately.
But, so I saw that, and now years later, in recent months, basically, the message I got was, you didn't act on it, so you lose it. Then Senator Joyce came up here and said, basically, I got your money to do, to do the job to get it done, it was in a bond bill. And I guess my confusion is, you know, I, I think.
Well, first of all.
I think he's correct, if he isn't correct, let's ask him about it.
First of all, there, there were two federal earmarks, one we lost, that, that was the one that.
We got one in two thousand and six for a million dollars, we got one in two thousand and seven for a million dollars. From the one in two thousand and six, we spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
From the, we spent a hundred and thirty-four, but we were allocated and we had to turn back the other sixteen, but that's squibbling, that's quibbling over small money. We lost eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the use it or lose it program, because it takes four to six months for Mass Highway to review engineered plans for a project. We could not have our engineering done because they hadn't taken and looked at our project information form, our project needs form, and come up with a review of it to say, now you can go into the next step. And because we couldn't, we didn't have that four to six month window, that's why we lost the eight fifty. We still have a million dollars.
For federal funds.
From Congressman Lynch, from two thousand and seven.
Those funds that we can only access if we go through proper process.
Construction monies is what that's there for, if we do construction, there's no match to it, it's all in the ground, it's jobs. But it's a one point four million dollar project.
My attitude is, whatever we have to do, let's get it done, it's been, we've been waiting for years.
That's what we're doing, that's what we're doing.
We're, everything that we had to file is filed, all we, we're, hurry up and wait at this point.
Right, it will probably be December when they approve.
They said that they'd be ready beginning of December, we asked them, if we went out and hired, put out a scope of work for a design engineer company, would they approve it? And they said, not until they do the final review, which is December first, it will take us between now and that amount to be able to fill in those documents correctly for that scope of work. So we're, we'll have it, they come, they come in and say, good, you're good to go, good, you know, and they tell me, here's the documents, well, here you go, they're already completed, that, that's, that's my goal, to have it when they're ready to accept it.
Okay, so you got forms, you got needs. Okay, so you got forms, you got needs, you let them know we want to do the hybrid plan?
Yep.
And then what's the period of time right after that? Like, I think it's a review time probably?
It's a review period right now.
How long is that gonna be?
December first. They said till December, beginning of December.
Okay, and then they say, okay, we like your plan, December one.
Yep.
Then what's the next step?
The next step is they'll, they'll review my scope. They'll look at the scope and the scope will be done. And because of the holidays, you say April, March?
Yeah. Oh my God.
December, February, January, March, April. Why?
It's-
That's the review period.
It's federal funds, so there's a state process and a federal process you have to follow at the state level. So it just takes time.
Not the private sector, Bob.
I'm not-
Okay, so now scope and April. We got December, April. What happens in April?
Those guys are working. Once they accept the scope and they-
The design.
And is that where the design engineer is working?
Yep.
Yes.
That scope is for-
You start taking a shovel-
Is the design engineer now in April carrying the ball of the project?
Now we can spend money on the design engineer. I wouldn't spend money until you get the scope approved.
Right, and to be honest, if we don't get the state bond money, then for, as a practical matter, we can, we can do the solicitation, but we have no money appropriated to actually sign a contract with anybody until after Maytown meeting, if we decide to use town funds.
If we have, you know, I think we need to get the job done. I thought we were gonna be able to use federal or state funds, but, and is that still a possibility?
If we use the federal funds-
That we can use all federal and state funds?
Federal, yes, but there is, there is a big time lag to using it. The state will continue to, will continue to push to find state funding if it's available.
And could somebody like Senator Joyce, who came in here and told us, basically, I got the money from the bond bill, can he help us move the money process along?
Well, he's where we'll start.
Good.
Right.
If we use town funds for the design review?
No, design engineering.
Design engineering?
Yes.
Can we use, later on, can we use federal funds to reimburse the town?
No. You can't back pay with federal funds. They were adamant about that, which is why Tom jumped on it. No.
Yeah.
Oh, you asked that?
We asked that question.
Yeah, Tom, yeah, that was Tom's question.
Yeah, it would be nice, but yeah, yeah.
They were-
Until they actually approve, until they actually approve it, you can't use the federal funds. And you can't go backwards. So it's only expenditures after the date they approve everything.
Right.
So-
Is there any community input? Or are we looking for that yet? You know, for Plan A versus Plan B or?
You can do that once we have the engineer on board. Yes, at that point. I wasn't sure where you were. Yes, on that one, once we have the engineer on board and we tell them, this is what we want modeled, and they come back with results, we can have those results in a public forum.
Until we can do the traffic study on the, on the Plan A, Plan B in terms of the closure of the slip lane, we really won't know. And until we get the state off of Wood Street Bridge, we're not gonna be able to do that.
You won't get it right.
Yeah.
Right. I go by the bridge, daytime, nighttime. I see equipment there.
They're underneath.
Oh, they're underneath?
Yeah, they're underneath.
Okay, I see lights, but where's the crew? Underneath?
Putting in new steel. They put a big piece of steel in last night. Big.
We're prepared to come to you right away, like, the second we know that's gonna, and you're prepared to come back to this board and say, okay.
Give it a shot.
We'll give it a shot.
Yeah, okay, good. Good.
I applaud your efforts. Anything about the temporary measures we talked about last time?
About the wayfaring measures?
The lanes and all this stuff, markings.
Well, I guess, we talked to Joe, and the ones on, on the Adams Street part would be kind of, you know, until we actually decide, is it Plan A or Plan B, and is the slip lane gonna close? That's gonna be difficult, and if we spend money, it's, it's non-reimbursable money, so it's gonna be town money we're spending, again, that, where are we gonna get the money?
Right.
If we do it as part of the project, which we kind of all agree, we'd like to see something done there because, I mean, it looks ugly, number one, with those-
What we're talking about are the arrows in here, and as we redo these lines, if we put them in and we close the slip lane, we have to grind them up. So it's a question of which do we want to do? How many times do you want to paint it?
Right, and the wayfaring, you know, going across by the fire station, well, if you change the park a little bit, that's probably, you know, that may or may not change that, that whole intersection through there.
Right, we start playing with the, with the crosswalks now, and we don't get to do what we're looking for.
Right.
With putting money in on top of money.
We definitely have to do something with the cross, especially the crosswalk at Adams Street, that first one near the cleaners there, that-
Adam's Barret.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that one's a problem.
Well, that's the one that, when we went to the chamber yesterday, people were talking about getting, getting close to being hit. And it becomes an issue of cars are taking the right on red, but what they're doing is they're coming down, they see the red light, and they just go to the right. They don't stop. There could be six cars, but those six cars are just going through the red light. There's no stop. It isn't, it's an enforcement piece that needs, it's an educational piece, not a, not a, it's education as what is.
I mentioned to Joe, I mentioned to Joe Lynch, have you seen what they've done at Bergen Parkway, Quincy has done, near the T Station, where they have people actually crossing Bergen Parkway to get to the T? They have these illuminated, bright white signs that say, yield to pedestrians and crosswalk. You can't miss them. I mean, they glare at you.
Which part of Bergen Parkway?
Right about the home, the New Lowe's.
Bergen and Center Street.
Yeah, right, yeah, you can't miss them. They're, they're huge and they, they just glare out at you.
I haven't seen people there, so I haven't seen the sun, but-
Yeah, the brand new Lowe's.
Right, I'll look.
Those might be a possibility, you know.
We had that, we put one of our sign boys there for-
The red on red, yeah, and that's gone now, but someplace else, yeah.
Something else had to have a shot.
It might be back and, you know, having something- It might have to be something that says, you know, enforcement of the right on red. But when we were talking, I know that when you were talking about the beat cop, the bicycle cop, I know that that was what was driving it.
Yeah.
And it is one of those issues of, you sit on that corner and don't just watch them go through, but pull them over. It's the ten-minute wait that, you know, makes them not do it again.
When the Commonwealth, two years ago, looked at the possibility of going to the automate like California has, when they looked at this town, that was the number one intersection.
Really?
Number one intersection violation.
And they came back no to the cameras.
No to the cam, well, the cameras are there, we actually have the cameras, it's just no to the-
Right, no to the-
To the, yeah.
Yep, that was statewide.
Any other questions on the deck, or pretty squared away on it?
Thanks for the update.
Thank you. Oh, Chief, I talked to my son, the driver of the, of the trailer decided there's enough room where he's staying down at the holidays, so he's fine. Thank you, though.
No problem.
I guess we have one more thing on your agenda. The Citizens, the Business and Citizens Advisory Committee for the East Milton Parking Study. The study is already in. The study has been given to, you have it, Mass Highway has it. We are ready to move on to Phase Two. The original committee charge was to get them to that point where we have a, have recommendations to give to Mass Highway. We've done that. I don't think we need the committee at this point.
Forget to speak in that committee.
From now on, right. To have committees for the sake of committees isn't a good idea. There will be a public process as we bring this forward. When we have the twenty-five percent plan, it's, it's a community-wide outreach. So we'll, we do it in concert with, it's actually driven by Mass Highway, but we help them with the outreach to it. They hold the meeting, they do the, all the legwork to it, but we help them with the public process.
What's twenty-five percent mean?
That, it's a name. It's a, it's a point in their plan. They have a twenty-five, they have a seventy-five, and they have a hundred.
So they start you off on a process, twenty-five, and then you become fifty?
You're trying to attain twenty-five percent, but if you took-
Twenty-five percent of what?
Twenty-five percent of the plan, of the complete design plan. We have a twenty-five percent plan for rehabbing Central Ave and adding a bike lane to that roadway. We got it to the twenty-five percent plan. It was approved by Mass Highway. The comments that came in afterwards are what, that's where we stopped. We don't want to bring the project forward. We would tweak the project at that point.
But you could- So twenty-five percent plan is sort of a step you take?
Yes. It is, it is, it is the major step that you need to attain. And as you're just about there, you're pushing hard for inclusion on the tip. Because the first twenty-five percent is the long part. From twenty-five to a hundred is like that. It's after that review process.
Okay, and we don't have the names or anything of that to just be in that committee at this point, right, or do we have any?
The names are in there.
Are they?
What number is this?
Number fourteen.
Fourteen, okay.
Oh, okay.
Oh, there it is.
Instead, instead of to approve, you're gonna disband the phone.
So we're disbanding?
So the motion to discharge the following members of the Citizens and Business Advisory Committee? And that would be Paul Lane?
I think they did a really good job while they were there. They did meet monthly. They were very good about, you know, email, making comments. I don't think there's anybody on it that didn't come back and make comments. They didn't, they weren't sitting on their hands.
Do you have to name all the names, or?
You can just disband the committee.
Just disband the committee.
Hudsonstein still available, like, to talk to and so on?
I'll second the motion. Okay. Okay, motion to disband the Citizens and Business Advisory Committee has been made in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none holds in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay.
Okay.
All right, we also have a motion to reappoint the Judith Kennedy as Mass Port Liaison and David Goodline as Alternative Mass Port Liaison through October two thousand and thirteen.
Second the motion.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? None holds in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, somebody else can take fifteen.
I'll make a motion to authorize Chairman Hurley to cast a vote for each of the following nominees who are running for vacant Metropolitan Planning Organization seats. Joseph C. Sullivan for South Shore Coalition and Catherine B. Cordes for the Minutemen Advisory Group on inter-local coordination, inter-local coordination.
Second the motion, Mr. Cordes.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none holds in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
When we have projects that go to the tip, what we do is we call Mayor Sullivan's office and ask for their support on that, and they do speak in favor of your project. And you need those members to speak in favor of your project. We will have gone to the subregional group, which we are into, we're in Inner Core and we're in Tri- River Zinta Local. And we get on their, their list of priority transportation projects. I do that all the time with Christine Stickney as their planner. We talk once a month on just transportation.
Signage request approvals.
Motion to approve a request from Beth Israel, Deaconess Hospital Milton, to display a temporary sign on the library lawn from November sixteenth through December second, two thousand and twelve, contingent upon approval of the library trustees.
Second the motion.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none holds in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Motion to approve a request from Colliers International on behalf of St. Elizabeth's Parish to display a temporary four-feet-by-six-feet real estate sign at five ninety-seven Randolph Ave while the property is being marketed.
They've asked for two signs. They want one for Randolph Ave, one for Reed's, Reed's Dale Road.
We only have a motion for one here. But we, yeah, they did mention that in our meeting.
It is a real estate sign, and we do not usually bring real estate signs to this board. We put it onto this agenda because of the request for two signs.
Yes, and I guess when they made the request, we got a letter from Jim Elcock, and he only requested one. Now, I don't know if a four-by-six sign is, is outside the norm or-
I had a reaction to that too, Tom. That was six foot. Is that big? And is, is that size necessary?
Bigger than me.
A lot bigger than me.
Because they consider, because they consider it, they're doing it because they consider it a commercial property. When this board has looked at putting up a sign in front of the Verizon Building, that was either four-by-six or four-by-eight. I think it was four-by-eight. When they wanted to put the sign in front of Dr. Delaney's, that was a big sign too.
Yep.
This, because they, if they had gone with one sign, it would have been a real estate sign, we wouldn't be here.
Wouldn't be here, yeah.
But because they asked for two, which is, when you put it at your house, we don't let you put two of them up. We let you put one up. But they're asking for two, we brought it to the board.
Why would they, you need to, I can remember one sign before at the corner.
I-
You know?
They originally asked for one on Randolph and one on Reed's Dale. But then when the request came in, it only came in for one. But it is a big sign, but, I mean, it doesn't hurt to approve it, but I-
Put it on the corner and ask for one, and staple it in at one on the corner?
It's not necessary, I guess, is the point, but, but it won't hurt to approve it.
The second one?
Well, no, all we're approving right now is one sign.
Yeah.
And not even a location. I mean, just at five minutes of-
Can I throw you a caveat? What if it's one double-sided sign?
Oh, good point.
Put on the corner, one double-sided sign. Wouldn't that achieve both purposes?
Yeah, it's one sign, yeah.
So you'll let them use one four-by-six sign or one double-sided sign?
Yeah, okay, so I guess we can make a motion to allow a double-sided sign, four-by-six.
But there's only one blade.
Right, yeah. At five ninety-seven Randolph Ave, so.
So are we amending this motion?
Yeah, to, to include, include a double-sided sign.
Double-sided sign.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, well, make the motion?
I made the motion.
I made the motion, second.
Okay, motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none holds in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I'll make a motion to approve a request from the Milton Art Center to display a sandwich board at the intersection of Brook Road and Adams Street in front of St. Agatha's Church and at the five-way intersection at the library on October twenty-sixth through November two, two thousand and twelve, announcing a fundraiser that is scheduled for November two, two thousand and twelve.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none holds in favor?
Aye.
One-day liquor license.
Motion to approve a request from the Milton Art Center for a one-day liquor license for a fundraiser that is scheduled for November second, two thousand and twelve, at three thirty-four Edge Hill Road.
Second the motion.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none holds in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous. Wait, I know, I know. We're a half hour ahead of schedule, I told my wife at least 11, so... Let's see, and we do have an executive session on the agenda, but I don't think there's any purpose, so we can...
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second the motion.
Okay, we're adjourned.